Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December 16th meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. All members are present. We'll call the meeting to order here at 7:05. And we are just adjourning from an executive session for the discussion of strategies with respect to litigation involving a claim from a police officer. And we did not get to the two minutes that we were scheduled to vote on. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which is the basis of our Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have transmitting of Treasury warrants, 22, 22A, 23, 23A, 24, and 24A is their motion.
Second.
Motion's made in second. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. We have no minutes to approve, so we'll move right to our first appointment, which we're all very excited about. And it's the reason we're all here, I'm sure. But what better way to kick off the Christmas season than to invite the premier vocal group in all of the land? They go by the name of Soundscape as they enter stage left. We want to welcome them here. And I know that, thank you guys for being here. I've had the privilege of hearing you guys sing quite a few times. And, man, you guys are awesome. And so we talked about our only December meeting, how cool would it be to have you guys come and perform? Because we think you just bring so much cheer to our community. I know that everybody at the tree lighting just loved you guys, and I'm a big fan of, and I'm hoping to hear Santa Claus is coming to town. Because I just love it when you guys sing that. And we're gonna have you guys say hello and maybe introduce yourselves in a moment, but we'll get right to it. I know that Mrs. Peters is here, your principal, and I know how proud she is. Superintendent Dr. Brand is here, and he's incredibly proud of you folks. I know you've had a couple, you've had a really busy season, I think. You and Santa Claus are the busiest people right now, getting ready for the big day. But we really appreciate all you do and go around, and what a positive thing, what a great way to start this meeting. I know your leaders are here, Mr. Farrar is here, and we thank you for all you do. And I'm gonna get out of the way, because I know everybody wants to hear him sing, so, including me. So we really welcome you guys. And without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, Soundscape.
(Singing) We wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. Good tidings we bring to you and your kin. We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. Oh, bring us some figgy pudding, oh, bring us some figgy pudding, oh, bring us some figgy pudding and a cup of good cheer. Good tidings we bring to you and your kin. We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. We won't go until we get some, we won't go until we get some, we won't go until we get some, so bring some out here. Good tidings we bring to you and your kin. We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. (Applause) (Singing) You're not doucher and dancer and prancer and vexing. Coming in cupid and honor and glancing. But do you recall the most famous reindeer of all? Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, he had a very shiny nose. And if you ever saw him, you would even say it close. All of the other reindeer, they used to laugh and call him names. They never let poor Rudolph join in any reindeer games. Then one foggy Christmas Eve, Santa came to say, "Ooh, with your nose so bright, won't you guide my sleigh tonight?" Then all the reindeer loved him, as they shouted out with glee. Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, you'll go down in history. (Applause) (Singing) Deck the hall with boughs of holly, fa-la-la-la-la, la-la-la-la. 'Tis the season to be jolly, fa-la-la-la-la, la-la-la-la. Don we now our gay apparel, fa-la-la-la-la, la-la-la-la. Droll the ancient yuletide carol, fa-la-la-la-la, la-la-la-la. See the blazing yule before us, fa-la-la-la-la, la-la-la-la. Strike the harp and join the chorus, fa-la-la-la-la, la-la-la-la. Follow me in merry measure, fa-la-la-la-la, la-la-la-la. While I tell of yuletide treasure, fa-la-la-la-la, la-la-la-la. Fast away the old year passes, fa-la-la-la-la, la-la-la-la. Hail the new ye lads in glasses, fa-la-la-la-la, la-la-la-la. Sing we joyous all together, fa-la-la-la-la, la-la-la-la. Heed the song of wind and weather, fa-la-la-la-la, la-la-la-la. Fa-la-la-la-la, la-la-la-la. Fa-la-la-la-la, la-la-la-la. (Applause) (Singing) Park, how the bells, sweet silver bells, all seem to say, throw cares away, Christmas is here, bringing good cheer. To young and old, pink and apple, ding-dong, ding-dong, gongs are sung with joyful ring all caroling. One seems to hear words of good cheer from everywhere filling the air. All have their pomegranates in their song, do I hear them, do you hear them? Gilly, they ring while people sing songs of good cheer. Christmas is here, ding-dong, ding-dong, day is gone, day, day is gone. And they send on with their hand, dear truffle tone to every home. How the bells, sweet silver bells, all seem to say, throw cares away. Ding, Christmas is here, bringing good cheer. To young and old, pink and apple, ding-dong, ding-dong, gongs are sung with joyful ring all caroling. One seems to hear words of good cheer from everywhere filling the air. All have their pomegranates in their song, do I hear them, do you hear them? Gilly, they ring while people sing songs of good cheer. Christmas is here, ding-dong, ding-dong, day is gone, day, day is gone. And they send on with their hand, dear truffle tone to every home. (Singing) Santa is coming to town. Santa is coming to town, Santa is coming to town, Santa is coming. You better watch out, you better not cry, I'm telling you why. Santa is coming to town, yeah. Checking it twice, oh. Santa Claus is coming. Santa is coming to town. He sees you when you're sleeping, he knows when you're awake. He knows if anything's bad or good, so be good for goodness sake. You better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town. Santa is coming to town. Santa is coming to town, Santa Claus is coming to town, oh. You better watch out, you better not cry. You better not pout, I'm telling you why. Oh, Santa Claus is coming, Santa Claus is coming, Santa Claus is coming. Santa is coming to town, Santa is coming to town. Santa is coming to town, Santa is coming. You better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming. Santa is coming to town. He's making a list and checking it twice. He's gonna find out who's naughty or nice. Santa Claus is coming, Santa Claus is com- oh, oh, oh. Santa Claus is coming to town. Santa Claus is coming to town.
That was just excellent. Thank you so much. So we have a little gift for you guys from the town of Wilmington. And what a treat that was for all of us to see. There's about 25,000 residents watching on WCCT. And I'm sure they thoroughly enjoyed it. But real quickly, if you don't mind, just introducing yourself and what grade you're in. That'd be great.
Hello. I'm Courtney Cummings. I'm a senior in high school.
I'm Abby Calhan, and I'm a senior in high school.
I'm Parker Wing, and I'm a freshman in high school.
I'm Jesse Danilic, and I'm a senior in high school.
I'm Caitlin Smith, I'm a sophomore in high school.
I'm Max Quintero, I'm a junior.
I'm Hannah Parr, I'm a junior.
I'm Megan Consoray, I'm a junior.
I'm Max Churchill, and I'm a senior.
I'm Riley Patterson, I'm a freshman.
I'm Chloe Stanford, I'm a sophomore.
I know your parents must be very proud of you, and we all are. You've just brought us so much joy, especially this time of year. But I know you guys performed a lot more than just this season, so we wish you well. And I want to give kudos to your director, and I don't know if you want to plug your group here, and anything you guys have coming up, this will be a great time.
Well, actually, this is us wrapping up our season. This is the last of the season.
You can't think of a better way. The next stop will be the Apollo. But thank you guys for everything you do, and I know you have a partner.
I do, Mr. Manelli, he can be here tonight.
He can be here, but we'd like to thank him too, so we really appreciate that. So I want to leave you with this, we have one for each of you guys, a certificate from the town of Wilmington, in heartfelt appreciation for your musical talents and the joy that you bring through the universal language of song. And so this will go right up on your refrigerator, I'm sure. And it's signed by the town manager and myself, dated today, 16th of September. Okay, I know it's a school night, so I know you want to get going, but Max, we have one for you. Max, you're a student. The other Max? Thank you so much for your talents. Parker?
Yeah.
Thank you. Wow, this group has a bright future, I think. Chloe? Ryan?
Ryan couldn't be here.
Ryan couldn't be here, okay. Caitlin, we'll give Mr. Ryan, I hope. And Ryan?
I'll come to you.
Ryan? Max? Off the press. Last but not least, Adam. The guy wants to be a director, we think he's doing such a great job, and we're really appreciative of that, so thank you. Thank you so much. One more round of applause. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bendel? Now that we're in the mood to go Christmas shopping, should we make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, to me.
Go Christmas shopping, everybody?
I was gonna go to the panel here, but I thought you might be too much of a Simon Cowell down there, Mr. Cowell.
Oh, no, America's got talent, I think.
I think so.
That they belong to.
They have a bright future.
That was great.
Well, speaking of bright futures, next up, we want to introduce two of our new police officers who have just began working here in the town of Wilmington. And with them is our police chief, Joe Desmond, and our deputy chief, Ryan. People are here. But it's my pleasure to introduce the newest members of the Wilmington Police Department, Officers Megan Souza and Joseph Fitzgerald. Good evening and thanks for being here. Chief Desmond, thanks for being here.
We look forward to this opportunity to formally introduce them to the community. Both Megan and Joe graduated the academy, I believe, in late October. They're currently in field training, which lasts approximately 12 weeks. They're both doing great, and we look forward to, we expect some great things out of them.
Absolutely. We certainly wish you the best of luck in a long and healthy career here in Wilmington. We thank you for what you've been doing now for some time. I think it was sworn in early November, if I correctly. And so we really appreciate, we hope you like it here, and I know the residents really appreciate your service to our community. It's one of the best things about living here, it's a safe place to live because of fine people like yourselves. And so we appreciate what you do and what you will do in the future. So you're welcome to say a few words. I don't know if you, maybe you want to tell us where you're from? That'd be great.
Yes, thank you. I actually grew up in Wilmington, I'm living in Chumsford now, and excited to be back and working for the town.
Homegrown, still here, and looking forward to it.
You're amongst good company, too, with two native sons in Wilmington that are side by side with you here, and so we really appreciate that. And just real quickly, if anybody up here wants to say a few words?
Just congratulations, welcome, and be safe out there. Thank you for what you're doing for the citizens and the community. Thank you.
Once again, appreciate everything you do, you know, you're out there protecting the town, and as my colleague said, be safe, and we appreciate everything you do, not only you officers, but the department as a whole. Thank you.
Just welcome aboard, and there's a lot of very skilled and very good officers that you have to learn from. So I look forward to getting to know both of you better in the years to come, and glad to see you guys are off to a good start.
I met your grandfather, Officer Fitzgerald, on Halloween, and he couldn't have been prouder. So, and I see the family resemblance, for sure. So welcome to both of you, thank you so much for choosing Wilmington.
Mr. Hall?
Congratulations again, and we really appreciate your service to the town, and I think your future looks bright.
You do, absolutely. And just lastly, now that we're all warmed up, if you want to sing any kind of... I don't think you want that. Give you a little more practice. But again, on behalf of all the residents, thank you very much, and welcome to our town.
Thank you.
Good evening. All right, next up, we're gonna have a public hearing. And we'll invite our next appointment up, a 7:15 appointment is with Joe Devlin, Esquire, on behalf of 99 Restaurant, Boston. I see Mr. Newhouse approaching, so I'll scratch that. But on behalf of the 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC, doing business as 99 Restaurant and Pub, good evening, Mr. Newhouse.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you'd indicated, Mr. Devlin is counsel of record for the 99 Restaurant and Pub and the different ownership interests that are the subject of the application. Mr. Devlin couldn't be here this evening, so he asked me to fill in and to appear before the board. So very briefly, Mr. Chairman, as you know, the 99 Restaurant and Pub is an establishment that's operated at 144 Lowell Street for almost 20 years now. There are no operational changes that are anticipated. Really, as the board knows, this application seeks to do two things. Number one, it seeks to request a change in offices or managers of the entity that owns the Wilmington establishment. And it also seeks to have the approval for a change in the beneficial interests in that organization. Suffice to say, for this hearing, that the company that owns the establishment is a limited liability company, so that the change is to the management, and the beneficial interest has to do with restructuring the publicly traded shares of a corporation. So to that end, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The names of the individuals who would assume control as the managers are in the application, and the ownership interests are spelled out as well, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Do we have recommendations?
In this particular case, this, because of the nature of this particular application and the fact that there are numerous communities across the Commonwealth that are involved with the 99s and their locations, this was really, in large measure, handled through the ABCC, the Alcohol Control Commission, and so I think the important point, there's a correspondence from Ralph Sacramone, who is the executive director at the ABCC, and he says in part that he notes that the documentation satisfied that this transaction is consistent with the purpose of the law and would not result in the individual corporate licenses being deemed to be out of compliance with the applicable statute. So it's his recommendation for approval.
Okay, thank you. Any members like to comment and ask questions? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to be heard regarding the 99 Restaurant? Okay. With that, I'll take a vote to close the public hearing first.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra.
Second.
And seconded, thank you. All in favor? It's unanimous? Okay. So now we have before us, if someone would like to make a motion for the 99 Restaurant.
I make a motion to grant the transfer as described by the council for the 99s.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
May I second it? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Newhouse. Take care.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, thank you. Okay, we'll move to our second and final public hearing of the evening, and that is regarding Michael's Place. I'll give my colleague the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna recuse, not only recuse myself, I'm gonna leave the room, and if somebody took me so kindly, give me back, and the recording secretary, Viv, if you can mark down the time I depart and the time I come in, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Folks, if you'd like to come on in, welcome. Good evening, it's Mr. Sani, correct?
Good evening.
Yes. Good evening. We're here for an application to change the manager at Michael's Place?
Yes.
So if you don't mind introducing yourselves?
My name is Jasbar Sani, I'm working as a personal consultant right now at Michael's Place.
And with you?
Yes.
Is Mr.?
My name's Sohom Sani.
Okay, thank you for being here. Okay, so the floor is yours.
I just applied to the town for a liquor manager for Michael's Place.
So you will remain as the manager, general manager? Correct. And do you have a particular person in mind, or you'll be seeking someone for the position?
No, I'm applying.
You'll be the beer manager as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, open it up to the audience. Would anybody like to be heard on the public hearing regarding a change of manager at Michael's Place? Okay. With that, I'll accept a vote to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded, all in favor? Four and one abstained. Do we have recommendations here, Mr. Hall?
Yes, so just to be clear, the current manager is Bira Ram, and the request here is to change the manager to Jasbar Sani. And the recommendation from the police chief, Joe Desmond, upon review, the Wilmington Police Department does not object to a change in the manager of Sarum Barra Inc., DBA, Michael's Place, from Barra Ram to Jasbar Sani.
Great. I want to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the application to change manager.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mrs. Omahoni, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Four and one abstention. Okay, thank you very much. And we'll, Tom Hall will be in touch with them.
Yes, so we will be, if you check in with our office tomorrow, you can make arrangements to pick up your license.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, so one detour, it has to go to the ABCC first, so once we hear back, then we'll be in touch with them? Okay. So it shouldn't take too long, I'm guessing within a couple of weeks, if that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening and good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you, you too. Okay. This one, too? Give Mr. McCoy a second to come in?
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, who can sign this one? This is 99.
This is 99.
Mike, this is the 99. Okay, as we're signing these, I know we're going to be having a PowerPoint presentation coming up next, so we want to make sure we invite our next guests up. If they want to get comfortable and get situated, feel free to come forward. Okay, we're a few minutes ahead of time, it's ahead of schedule. But we are pleased to welcome our friends from the Elderly Services Commission here this evening, and members of the audience who are here to hear this presentation. If you recall, a few meetings back, we heard from not only the Facilities Master Plan Committee, but the Finance Committee and the School Committee in regards to the future capital improvement projects. And we thought that it would be important to invite you folks here to give us recommendations as well, so that going forward, this board and the town as a whole could make very informed decisions about what the future will hold. And so I want to credit Mr. Eaton, who formally invited you folks here to be on the agenda. And I couldn't agree more that it's important to hear from the Elderly Services Commission. So with that, good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Selectmen and Selectwoman. My name's John Wallace, and I am chairman of the Commission for the Elderly. I'd like to thank you for letting us come here tonight and do our presentation. I'd like to introduce to you the other commissioners, Mark Ryan, vice chairman, Gil Protopapis, Robin Theodore, Mary Dion, Pat Robashad, and Charlotte Damaco, could not be here tonight. I'd like to start by saying, this is our Senior Center mission statement. Wilmington Department of Elderly Services is committed to continuously advocating, promoting, and providing services to Wilmington seniors 60 and over. These services continue to the well-being of senior citizens, sorry. The Buzzell School was opened in 1935. Subsequently, it was mothballed until the late '70s, early '80s. With the efforts of a determined group of volunteers, tradesmen, and local companies, the school was refurbished and reopened as the current Buzzell Senior Center on April 6th, 1986. It cost the town nothing. As you can imagine, this 80-year-old building is showing its age. Wilmington demographics, Wilmington has an aging population. Almost 30% of the adult population is over the age of 60. Reference, 2018 Town Census. When the Senior Center first opened, that number was less than... When the senior center first opened, that number was less than one percent. There are currently five thousand four hundred eleven seniors in town and over two thousand registered at the senior center, and twenty-eight thousand five hundred seniors logged in last year, approximately a hundred and fifty people per day. In two thousand and fifteen, the senior population was three thousand five hundred and eighty-four, and the project, projected number by two thousand and thirty is six thousand fifty-eight, or sixty-nine percent increase from two thousand and fifteen. Wilmington age demographics, if you look down between sixty and sixty-five, one thousand nine hundred and sixteen are seniors, that is ten percent of the population. Sixty-five and over, it's three thousand four hundred and ninety-five, with eighteen point seven percent. But if you look at the fifty to fifty-nine age, it's three thousand seven hundred and eighty-one seniors will be coming, twenty percent increase. Now at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair. Mark will be discussing building deficiencies.
Thank you. My name is Mark Ryan, and I'd like to talk a little bit about the building deficiencies. Presently, we have no dedicated administrative offices in the senior center. The walls may have asbestos as of the master facilities plan of two thousand and eighteen. There is no sprinkler system in the building. The bathroom facilities are inadequate. The downstairs is unusable, and you later see some pictures, there are drainage pipes which are in poor condition. There's poor ventilation for ceramics and woodworking in the basement. The wooden stairs to the basement are unsafe for seniors. There's no handicap accessibility. There's a very minimum space in the basement. There are low ceilings height, which contributes to the ventilation, and there are no windows. Also, the building retrofit, was retrofitted for wheelchair accessibility. They, the building is not energy efficient with regard to its windows and walls, which have no insulation. The HVAC or heating and ventilating system is antiquated and provides hot and cold spots throughout the building. There is no space for privacy or confidentiality for counseling and meetings. There is inadequate parking, there is an, and with the parking, there's an overflow parking, requires street parking in the old Swain School area. Because of the lack of space of parking, some of the seniors decide to go home and not visit the center after they drive through the parking lot and find that there is no space. If you look at the pictures that are shown on the screen, the first one is an aerial view of the senior center with the limited parking up front, and you can see that if we count all the spaces, there is about forty spaces, and if we have more than forty people at the senior center at any one event, sometimes there are a hundred, two hundred people that come to an event, there is inadequate parking. If you look at the next picture, this is a picture of the basement, which is no longer used, but it used to be for the woodworking activity that we had, but we no longer use it. The next picture shows that even though there is standing room in some parts of the, the basement, this third picture shows that this is a crawl space where there are pipes, and this is under half the building, and there's no stand, this is a crawl space with no standing room. In the fourth picture, this is a picture of the, the kitchen with limited counter space for preparing meals, wrapping sandwiches, desserts, or whatever for an event, so that's the only space that there is available for, for preparing the meals. In the next space, we have the stairs, in the next picture, rather, the fifth picture, we have the stairs going down to the basement, which is not handicap accessible. In the sixth picture, we see that this is the stairs from, from the basement where we have limited storage and things have to be placed on the floor. The rolls of paper towels are seen next to the sta, the space. Some of the needs for the programs that we have that are run now at the center, programmatic needs are the following. Ongoing programs have to be canceled due to the space constraints, and some of the programs that we've had to cancel are the Winchester Hospital Educational Seminars, the Veterans Luncheons, and the intergenerational programs. Some of these had to be canceled and moved around because of the limited space. The Memory Cafe has no space at the present facility and had to be moved to the Fourth of July building. The Art Class has no space at the, at the senior center, and it had to be moved also to the Fourth of July building. While we move these activities to another facility, all the materials that are needed for those activities have to be carried into that new spot and have to be then packed up and shipped out after the activity is, occurs. So for instance, for the Art Class, any canvases or paints or other supplies, we have to bring them in and then pack them up to get rid of them after the activities. There is, the next is, there is no dedicated room for educational seminars, for the caregiver support group, for computer room and equipment. There is no library or quiet space. There is no room to leave exercise equipment, it has to be brought in and carried out. There is no dedicated space for exercise classes such as the yoga, the tai chi, the zumba, the line dancing. Again, all of the equipment used for those activities has to be brought in and then brought out. There is no dedicated space for the sewing, the activity, the arts and crafts and games. There is no space, dedicated space for ceramics. The kiln for the ceramics is in the basement, and it's not in use because there's no ventilation when we have to spray the ceramics before they're put into the kiln. There is a billiard room, but it's hard to get around the billiard table. There is no multimedia, excuse me, the multimedia that we have has to be upgraded. The secondhand furnishings need to be upgraded, and I might mention that most of the furnishings that we now have were donated by various groups, the Lexington Council of Aging, the local businesses, and also the Bayberry Assisted Living donated all of the furniture that we have presently in the, in the building. Lastly, there is no storage space, and we need to have a outside shed built to house medical equipment that is used by seniors such as walkers and wheelchairs and things like that. So, that lists some of the programmatic needs. I'd like to turn the meeting now over to Gail Protopapas, who will talk about some of the new building offerings.
There have been visits made to Tuxbury, Wakefield, and Newburyport, used to assist in evaluating the following recommendations. Facilities Master Plan recommends new building be a minimum of fourteen thousand square feet. Reference, Facilities Master Plan. Current building has twenty-eight hundred square feet of usable space. Dedicated administrative offices. Enlarged commercial kitchen. Daily lunch on site. Invite local restaurants to cater weekly special luncheons. Large function room that can be divided for multipurpose. Fully equipped exercise room. Large conference room for educational seminars. Foster healthy aging and enable collaboration with Lahey Health. Reopen woodworking group. Dedicated office space for privacy for discussing, discussing. Finances, taxes, counseling, home care, et cetera. Return the memory care component to the senior center. Dedicated room for computers and training. Outdoor space, walking trails, victory garden, pavilion area, bocce, pickleball. Large parking lot. Portico to accommodate van drop off and pickup.
This time I'd like to introduce Deborah Russo, who is the senior on the focus group.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Russo, senior, and member of the senior center focus group. Recently, a subset of the group visited some other senior centers, and I'm here to report briefly on two of them. Wakefield has a senior population of five thousand two hundred nine out of a general population of approximately twenty-five thousand. It opened in two thousand and two in a one-hundred-year-old former elementary school and a renovation cost of three million dollars. Previously, the senior center was two rooms elsewhere in Wakefield, and they were desperate to move, so they grabbed this building because it was available. Only then did they discover that the location was terrible, the parking office and program space inadequate, and that they had not asked for enough money to complete renovations. Judy Luciano, the executive director, offered us four words of advice: go big and go new. Newburyport did both. Smaller than Wilmington, Newburyport has a senior population of four thousand out of a general population of approximately seventeen thousand. The center was built in two thousand and fifteen on the former site of an elementary school, which was razed because the costs involved in rehabbing it for a senior center were prohibitive. It is a three-story structure of sixteen thousand square feet, built at a cost of seven million for new construction, new parking, and landscaping. Because the building has a new orientation, the rooms are sunny and warm in the winter. Unlike Wakefield, Newburyport offers outdoor activities such as bocce and pickleball courts, gardening, and picnicking under a pergola. There are over forty unique classes offered each month, all on site, including support groups and wellness visits by a dental hygienist, massage therapist, and podiatrist. Their kitchen will be conducive, excuse me, conducive to offering classes on healthy cooking. We asked the director, Roseanne Robillard, what she would change if they could start over. She smiled and said, "Nothing."
This time I'd like to introduce Diane Allen, who is a member of the focus group, and we'll do our summary.
My name is Diane Allen. I'm a senior in this town. I've lived here fifty-three years. I'm a member of the Facility Master Plan and a member of the focus group for the senior I'm going to briefly summarize for you some of the key points in our presentation, and I'm also going to discuss a proposed article for the two thousand and twenty annual town meeting for a new senior center. Under demographics, I think you'll realize from our slides that Wilmington has a large senior population. Currently, thirty percent of the town's adult population are over the age of sixty, which translates to five thousand four hundred eleven seniors, and that total is projected to grow to over six thousand people by the year two thousand and thirty. And over two thousand of these seniors are registered at the senior center. Under our demonstrated needs, I think you will also agree, based on our presentation, that we have building deficiencies and program deficiencies. And I know that some of you have been down to the senior center and have seen some of those deficiencies in person. For example, some of the building deficiencies include, it's an eighty-four-year-old building, there's possible asbestos in it, it has inadequate HVAC, it's not energy efficient, downstairs is not usable because there's wooden, steep stairs. Dirt floor, there's no ventilation for ceramics and woodworking, there's no windows down there, and no storage. In addition, there's inadequate parking, no sprinkler system, and no room for dedicated administration offices. In addition, the program deficiencies include ongoing programs being canceled due to lack of space. The Memory Cafe and the Art Classes need to be held in the Fourth of July building. There's no dedicated rooms for many of the programs, and ninety percent of the furnishings are hand-me-downs. Regarding an article for the two thousand and twenty annual town meeting, we are here tonight to ask the board to sponsor an all-inclusive article at the two thousand and twenty annual town meeting for a new senior center. This article would take the project from conception through final construction. It would include the following: preliminary engineering design, final design, construction, and construction administration such as O P M, which is owner's project managers, or many of you know as clerk of the works. The preliminary engineering design would include siting, addressing land requirements, environmental impacts, building schematics, borings, project schedule, detailed cost estimates, and permit requirements. The final design would include preparation of plans, specifications, and contract documents for public bidding. We are estimating the total project cost to be eight point seven five million dollars, which was determined as follows. The Facility Master Plan estimate for the building, building, was six point seven million dollars. Those costs were for F Y two thousand and seventeen. That cost was updated to current costs using construction cost indexes and review of similar projects. The current construction cost of building is now estimated at seven point four five Preliminary engineering design is two hundred thousand. Final design, construction administration, and contingencies at one point one million, which brings the total project cost to eight point seven five million. We believe that this project should be funded using free cash and/or the Capital Stabilization Fund with no impact on the tax rate. The total of those funds is thirty-eight million dollars. Twenty-four million in free cash and twelve million in, or fourteen million in the Capital Stabilization Fund. And I took those figures from a- And I took those figures from a statement that the manager made discussing the issue of free cash and the town's capital stabilization fund, and I believe he discussed this on November 17th with the board. At the previous selectmen's meeting, Mr. McCoy talked about using $8 million from free cash for the senior center, and his number was pretty accurate. In conclusion, we asked the board tonight to sponsor an article at the 2020 annual town meeting for a new senior center in the amount of $8.75 million. Lastly, I would just like to leave you with this last thought. There is a saying that goes, "A journey of a thousand miles begins with a single step." And the Wilmington seniors are ready to take that first step. Board members, this concludes our presentation this evening. I want to thank you for your time and your attention this evening. Thank you all very much.
Well, thank you folks very much, obviously, very well-prepared, very well-thought-out. I know you and many others probably contributed, so we appreciate that. I hope that the presentation can be sent to the manager so that it can be distributed to the, to the members. That'd be great, thank you very much. We appreciate your input, and I know there'll be questions or comments from our board members in just a moment. The one thing I would add is that, I have a couple of questions myself, but before we get to that, I'm sure that the commission can appreciate that certainly, I'm not opposed at all as chair to put that on the agenda for a future meeting, that we're certainly, we couldn't take up a vote of that magnitude without letting the public know we were going to vote on something like that. So certainly, it would have to be taken under advisement and then posted so that the public could know that the meeting was going to take place. So I just want to put that up front. But again, as chair, I have no problem if a board members want to entertain that at a future meeting, I'm certainly fine with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just a couple of initial questions that I have before I turn to my colleagues. One is just the operational, just to, I have this correct, the hours at the senior center are Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m.?
Presently.
Presently? Okay, thank you. And in regards to the proposed article, what would be the location?
We would have the consultant first look at what was proposed in the master facilities plan, and that is here at the town hall. There is quite amount of land here at the town hall that we would have him take a look at. That would be the first sighting for him, and then we would offer him, if that was not feasible, other sites of which the town has land available.
And lastly, in the article proposing, would it have a end timeline, what would be the end of the timeline in terms of opening, in ideal and theory?
That would be part of the request for proposals, that a project schedule would have to be submitted by the consultant, and that the town was looking at a turnaround time of from beginning to end, hopefully, I mean, I'm estimating this. If we were to appropriate this at annual town meeting, and by the time you get certified by the state for your monies and everything, but this has nothing to do with money, an RFP could be put out, I would say by September, two years to see the thing on-site, two years.
2022.
2021.
2021.
Yeah, because we're going to annual town meeting in 2020.
Correct.
So 21, possibly even going into 2022, to see the actual full construction completed.
Thank you. Any of my colleagues have questions or comments for the commission? Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just share some thoughts and make some commentary. No, I think the message is loud and clear, and it's been there for a while, that the seniors in this good community would like to see a senior center sooner than later, and I get that. And I just have a few numbers here, Mr. Chairman, if I can just share with you. When it comes to free cash, no matter how you cut the mustard, we have $38 million in two accounts, and that's what we've attributed. For example, in Andover, at the end of 2019, they have $8,807,910 in free cash. In our next neighboring community, Borica, as of 2019, they have $5,390,953. If you can just bear with me, Mr. Chairman, I just want to read a few more. And another neighboring community of ours, Burlington, as of 2019, has $11,672,567. So I took a look at Clonkett, rich community, all right, as of 2019, they have $11,683,672. And, you know, I can go on and on and on, I have several here, but for example, in Lincoln, another rich community, as of 2019, they have $6,308,450. So I think we could keep on, and I'll go one more, North Andover, $11,968,95, that's as of 2019. And, and one more, a good keep, good keep taking, North Reading, $4,603,80. So I think we've done pretty good here in the town of Wilmington. We've attributed a lot of free cash over the period of time, and I knew over the past four or five years, we've always put about, above and beyond paying all our bills, we put about another $4 million back in the bank, but this last year, we put about $6 million into the bank, above and beyond what we paid. So I think the town has done good, and through town management, obviously, we have a huge, and I'm not ashamed to say, we've got like a big cash cow out there. We have a huge commercial base, more so than most communities, and we do receive a lot of tax dollars relative to that. You know, so, you know, I see a lot of faces out there and faces, you know, all about, and I'm sure my, you know, my colleagues, you know, have something they would like to offer and say as well, and, you know, I'd like to, you know, I know you said, Mr. Chairman, that maybe down the road, we could maybe consider a motion, but, you know, January's around the corner, and before you know it, in February, we have to submit all these warrant articles. So I'd be more happy, you know, I like to hear from my colleagues, but I would really like to offer a chairman, Mr. Chairman, a motion this evening, and just put that out there and see what happens. You know, you know, it's a great community, I'm here, I'm 61 years old, I just turned 61 the other day, you know, I'm considered a senior citizen as the get-go, they say, in age 60, I'm a year and above and beyond, and I've lived in Wilmington close to those 61 years. So I think my roots run deep in this community, and I care about our town, just like all us good, select people up here care about the town, and so does the manager. And I said at the, when we had the meeting back, I think it was November, Mr. Chairman, if you could correct me, when we had the school committee and the, you know, the master facilities committee there, and, you know, we talked, you know, about many, many aspects of everything, and I said back then, I mean, I'd be in favor of not raising tax dollars or two-and-a-half override or even a debt exclusion. If we got the cash now, why don't we grab it now? And I wouldn't be two-faced. At the last meeting that we had, we had to set the tax rate, and I struggled with it. I said, you know, I mean, given the fact that we have $38 million in free cash, I don't think we should even try to raise anyone's taxes and try to give a rebate back to the citizens, but I didn't want to play that back. I didn't want to do that, because a couple of months earlier, a month earlier, I stated when we had the meeting in the auditorium, why don't we take the money out of free cash because it's our tax dollars? And, you know, obviously, I'm taking a little time, Mr. Chairman, I really appreciate the time, but once again, before we end with this, I'd like to put a motion out there and actually do something now instead of putting it off, and this would be something no different than we did to the hockey rink many, many years ago, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. The only response I would have to that is that certainly, I would imagine that the commission could appreciate that we would want to see the article and run it by legal counsel before we were to vote on it, and certainly give the opportunity for residents in the community to know what was being proposed and get their feedback before we were to take a vote. So certainly, that would be my recommendation based on your commentary.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you for that presentation. It was eye-opening to say the least. The location in Newburyport, what, how many acres is that parcel built on that new, how much does it take up, do you know?
Who's Deborah? Is Deborah here?
Hi.
Hi, Deborah.
I'm not sure of the entire acreage, what, what, basically, it's kind of a campus in that the elementary school that was razed, another reason it was razed, they didn't need it because they had built an elementary school nearby, but the walking trails of the senior center kind of encourage, or encompass. So I'm not exactly sure what the overall acreage is. The director wasn't sure either, but we could probably get that information.
I was curious, what it would encompass, because I know that you mentioned...
Just to give you a better picture of that, Mr. Kyra, as Deborah said in her presentation, there was an elementary school there, and so they voted money to build a new elementary school right next door. So the new elementary school was replaced. They looked at that school to try to rehab it, it was cost prohibitive, so they razed it, tore it down. I would say there was at least three acres there of land, because there was 90-plus...
Tom Hall, I think it's about 20, 23 acres.
Okay, right. I would say that the, there's over nine, there were over 90 parking spaces available at that Newburyport senior center. And then there was like a fence that you could see where the school was, the new elementary school they could have. So they had, you know, they subdivided their land, got their new elementary school, and then built their senior center there.
Yeah, I, I think, once again, it was a great demonstration, great proposal, something that's needed, there's no question about it. Your location of town hall might be something to study, to assess, maybe a new town hall in a different location with the senior center here. The new town hall is proposed over at the, I believe, the, maybe the St. Dorothy's site, and then the new town, the new senior center here. I guess we'd have to see how that, how each step goes along the way for something like that. I know in Swampscott, I believe that they have a new senior center as well that they attached to the high school. I don't know if that's something that needs to be looked at, attaching a senior center to a new town hall, I don't know, or keeping it separate. There's, there's so much that, that, you know, can be discussed, and I guess we would need some people to study it and assess it and, and see what, what falls out. But I would like to see a town hall and school administration building built over St. Dorothy's parcel with the new senior center built right here at town hall, personally.
Okay, may, may I just answer him in one question through you, Mr. Chairman? You know, I have gone on to the GIS map here of the town of Wilmington, and I really encourage everybody here to view it. It is amazing, amazing to determine different lands around here. It shows everything. It's one of the best investments this town has made. And there is a lot of buildable property here, right here on this site. And the reason we're pushing to make this a priority, and I know that among the master facility plan, also in there, they've suggested that the, this building be replaced too, but there's no immediate need to demolish this building. You can build the senior center, I believe, right on this site. There is land available, keep this building operating until you people decide where you want to put it, and go out for your RFP, or preliminary design, or the whole thing, or build more money up in the capital stabilization plan, pay it all off without any debt exclusion to the people. I think there are, there are many, many alternatives to be explored, and I don't think the movement of this particular building impacts the building of a new senior center.
Kyra?
Yep.
Mr. Eaton?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I want to thank you for continuing the discussion of the facilities master plan. I want to thank the members of the elderly services commission for coming. I know some of my colleagues and I sat through, I guess, your dry run last month at the senior center, and I thank you for contributing to the conversation as the town really weighs the varying needs that we have. You know, we're, we're kind of in a difficult position, but it's the, the difficult position that we all asked to be in because we have so many different needs in town, so, you know, we obviously have issues with the schools, and we have issues with the town hall, and we have issues with the senior center, and the library, and so on and so forth. I, I am in support of a new senior center. I don't think that, I, I will note that on our agenda today is a board to consider item for possible changes to our inhabitant bylaws, that's just to comply with the open meeting law. So the fact that a motion isn't going to be entertained tonight doesn't mean that that's not going to happen, and our chair has said that he would put it on the agenda for our next meeting if a board member asked, so I trust that that will be the case. But the purpose is just to comply with the state's requirements for an open meeting law, and we do have some time to go forward with that. In terms of financing this, I, I trust that our town manager and the finance director/town accountant will work with our finance committee to go through and figure out what's the best plan to do, because we don't have just one need in town. We have varying needs, and it can't just be, well, what's going to solve one of the needs without considering all of the rest. So if it's a mix of some amount of free cash or capital stabilization or both in financing, you know, I certainly am, am looking forward to how that conversation goes so that we can consider the how to make it happen, but I do think that the time has come to make it happen. The, the, the location is certainly, I think, the biggest hurdle here, because parking's an issue at the town hall. And if we're going to put a senior center and a town hall smooshed onto this, yeah, 20 acres sounds like it's huge, but at the same time, come here in August during football practice, you're going to be parking way up near Glen Road, you're going to be parking on the grass. And some of the programs that, that the senior center currently offers doesn't have adequate parking where it is now. If it's going to be programs that are during normal business hours where the parking lot's pretty much full here, we're going to have to be creative with the space that we have in order to make that work. So I, I again want to thank the elderly services commission for coming and presenting and talking about some of the limitations that the current facilities have, the different programs that seems like have been cut because of the limitations of the Visel School site, and the, the programs that I'm sure that the need for is only going to increase because, as has been noted several times tonight, the population of seniors in town is only going to grow. So I do want to, again, thank you for coming tonight and bringing the receipts, so we, and more importantly, the folks in town, get to know if they're not frequenting, frequenting the senior center, what exactly the needs of the senior center are. So, thank you.
Mrs. Mahoney?
Thanks. So I have a lot that I want to say and add. I first wanted, again, thank the commission for coming, for the information, it did, we did get a nice preview at the commission's last meeting, and I thank you for letting me come to the last few, just so I could learn more about you, because I fully admit that I didn't understand what your commission did and what your, kind of what you were, you were meant to do and what you have been doing and taking on for this. I'm going to start upfront with my concerns about what's been said. I had made a motion to have a committee, and I referenced a community center, and my motion wasn't seconded because I didn't keep it exclusively to a senior center, and I'm dumbfounded right now that there was a suggestion that we would combine sites where there's a bunch of student activities and children activities, or have it on, attached to a school. You have made the message clear, you want your own space, and you don't want to share it. I have heard you, I get it, I understand where you're coming from. So my concern with the proposed article is we don't have an identified... to share it. I have heard you, I get it. I understand where you're coming from. So my concern with the proposed article is we don't have an identified location. If you were able to identify a specific location, I would be a lot more comfortable, because I think Selectman Kyra absolutely demonstrated what my concern becomes, is the domino effect of if we do this article with the full build amount without an identified resource, we are opening up the potential to also have to address other, less priorities, like a new Town Hall. If the school were here, the school committee were still here tonight, you know, the, the two examples you gave was a renovated school and a razed school. So if I were Dr. Brand, I would be standing here saying the Wildwood School site would make a lovely area for a senior center, and then we'd get our new Wildwood School even quicker. So that's my concern, is I don't want to put the town in a position where we're spending what we think is eight point seven five million dollars of free cash, which I'm going to get to in a minute, and we're opening ourselves up to the liability of not needing to build the, just a senior center, but we're now committing to needing to build one or two other buildings that might not be as high on the priority list for the town's needs. You know, we, we were at the meeting for the, the master plan. We see the needs of the town. Unfortunately, you know, I, I, I live in a house that was built in nineteen eighty-seven. We're in the process of putting an addition on it, and it's painful, because we let things go for so long, because we had wanted to do the addition for the last eight years. So now, instead of it just being what could have been a simple addition eight years ago, we're replacing rotted siding that could have been done years ago. And the construction cost, just in one year, from the beginning, from planning phase to building phase, the cost of lumber has increased. So I get the concern that, that we need to do this now, but my, we have, there's so many needs of this town that I don't want to make the senior center the bullseye of the other needs being either neglected or being forced and not the, the order of priorities. So what I'm, what I'm getting to with all of that is basically, if there was an identified, so, identified site, like if, if you decided that the site, or the committee decided, or someone decided that the St. Dorothy's land, which is available, was the site for a new senior center, I think I'd be more inclined to say, let's, let's put it all in one article and, and get the process moving, because I think that there is some considerations that still need to be in effect. I would be more comfortable with an article, and I think you suggested this at the commission meeting, Ms. Allen, for the feasibility study and the final design even, to be done next year with the idea that we're not going to invest two million dollars in planning something that we're not going to then want to build. So that's where I'm coming from at this point, and I don't mean to upset or disappoint anyone, but I'm really, I'm concerned with jumping in without all of the information. Like, we heard Mr. McCoy tonight talking about the free cash of the surrounding towns, but what are their bond ratings? You know, I mean, Wilmington has a lot of, of reserves right now, but we also have unbelievable bond ratings compared to some of our counterparts, and we don't want to lose that in, in, in an economy that's going to be uncertain with an election year coming up. We don't want to lose that when we might need some borrowing power to keep our tax rates what they are. So those are just the things that, that I'm thinking about right now. And again, I, I agree that the senior center is needed. I'm not saying this because I don't want to see a senior center built as soon as feasible, but I don't want us to do it and, and then regret it down the road, that we did it in a way that wasn't as thoughtful as, as it could have been. So my suggestion, I would support a warrant article for the town meeting, for the feasibility study and final designing, with the idea that an identified location would be completed, but between the 2020 and the 2021 town meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, so, just to add one more thing, I want to give the manager an opportunity to speak too, but I, I don't think you see much opposition up here from anybody in terms of the idea of a new senior center. I think what we're hesitant about is make sure we can all hopefully agree, is if you're going to do something, we want to make sure we do it right, and that benefits everybody, and it benefits our wallets too, right? It's fiscally responsible. So certainly you can understand that there's going to be some question. We want to be able to, if it's going to be a town out, offered sponsored article, we want to give the courtesy to the management staff to be able to review it and make recommendations and ask these questions, right? This alone is the material for tonight's meeting, what we're voting on, right? So I'd be hesitant to vote on something we haven't even seen yet, and I'm sure perhaps you can appreciate that. But again, I don't see a lot of opposition up here for a new senior center. I do see five volunteers that want to make sure that we're spending responsibly and doing what's best for the entire community going forward. I too have reservations about using everything out of free cash. I know that in my short time, just over three years here on the board, I've learned that if free cash goes down, taxes very well may go up, and that's just my way of putting it. That's my fear. So I want to pass it to the manager to be able to-
Yes, so I don't disagree that there's clearly a need. It was identified and articulated in the feasibility master plan. The challenge that, that I think we all collectively have is dealing with multiple buildings that are in a distressed state. So there's no question that the, that the Buzell Senior Center after, at eighty-five, you know, it's, it's showing its age, and there need, it needs to be addressed. We also have, as was mentioned earlier, the Wildwood School. The public buildings department is literally over there weekly, or if not daily, dealing with issues. You know, it's, that is a tired building. We need to do something with that building. There's been an identified need for many, many years, but I think to the board's credit, they have decided to pursue action on a Wilmington substation. There's no question that the challenge of our existing situation is that we have a central fire station, public safety building in one side of town, but crossing the tracks can be a challenge, and getting up into the North Wilmington area where there is development continuing, commercial as well as residential, that's a priority. So as much as we have a lot of free cash, there's no question, that only goes so far. And if we, so the question I have is how do we sync up these projects in parts so that we can afford them, and so that Standard and Poor's and the, any other rating agencies that we may look to the next time we have to borrow, don't downgrade our rating, because the fact that we have a double A plus rating means that when we do go out to borrow, we get more favorable interest rates, which, when you're talking about a, you know, a potential eight million dollar, ten million dollar project, in the case of the high school, eighty-four million dollar project, whether you're at three point five percent or four percent, you know, that makes a difference over the course of a thirty-year borrowing or a twenty-five year borrowing. So those are things that I'm sensitive to. I am going to be meeting later on this week, in fact, with our finance director, our assistant town manager, and our advisor, borrowing advisor, to look at some of these projects and, you know, figure out some options as to how we can afford to do these kind of projects. Some of them, there may have to be some simultaneous projects. But again, as easy as it may sound to just take eight million dollars out of free cash, there's a consequence to that, because there will be a point in time, as there has been in prior years, and I've been here long enough to see it multiple times, where the economy has run out of steam. And we have had periods where the town, when, when the economy is not as robust as it is now, businesses aren't building, which means we lose the revenue from building permits. People aren't buying cars, so we lose the revenue from motor vehicle excise tax, the property values, as much as I know it's a frustration for many people because tax bills go up, but the values start to stagnate or go down. So all of those things have led in past cycles to periods where we've had to rely upon some of that free cash for a rainy day fund. And, you know, I know it sounded like a broken record, but other communities have not been as fortunate as Wilmington. They've had to cut services, cut personnel, and I want to do everything in my power to avoid that circumstance the next time we have that down cycle. So all of those things go into the mix. So there's, there's no question that a, a senior center is needed, but I think we need to be very deliberative about how it's done and, and when it is done in the context of all these other facilities that need to be addressed. And also to the point that was made earlier about the domino effect. So we've got a number of different buildings that need to be addressed. If, if the senior center is placed in, on town property A, that automatically reduces or eliminates options for the other buildings. So there's a, it's a, it's a kind of a web of sorts that we really have to be mindful of in terms of the planning that goes on.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but in terms of free cash, we already scheduled to take items out of free cash for the upcoming town meeting. I know we did last year, Ballpark, is it five million dollars worth of projects?
Yeah, I mean, typically, we, we take something in the order of four or five million dollars. It all depends upon the capital projects, but that's the other point to be made known, is that aside from these building projects, in any given year, there's a number of other so-called capital projects, whether it's window replacements, purchase of vehicles. As you've seen, if you've been at prior town meetings, you will, you will see that there are other types of projects that aren't specific to building replacements. The schools, for example, there's oftentimes replacement of computers that they require because of the academics and so on. So all of those things need, need to be, either fit into the regular operating budget, or in some cases, taken from free cash. So it's a good point.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
I know you've all voiced your opinions. I, I want to just make a couple of points clear, okay? I don't think any of us in this room tonight want to pit one project against the other. We're not going to pit the senior center against the fire substation in the name of safety for the people of this town, okay? That's not what we're here for. We are here for, tonight, to tell you that we feel our project is a priority to start with. I'm not going to deny that. And I think that preliminary design will tell us, because it's going to be written into the RFP, of where to cite it. You know, the master facility plan is a blueprint. It gave suggestions. It gave a list of the twenty-eight buildings, existing buildings that we looked at. It didn't really prioritize, do this one first, do this one second, do this one third, okay? It gave you a cost estimate with each, the most expensive one being the Town Hall, because you were combining two buildings. But I just want to talk about that it won't be the first time for an article to go before town meeting for two building projects. The middle school and the combined police and fire station were voted together. So we've done two projects. What I think we are here tonight is to push for this building without raising the tax rate. Now, I know it's a sore subject, but it's my understanding from all the years I've lived in here, that the capital stabilization fund was started for that particular reason, because it was started so that we wouldn't have to put the tax burden of these new buildings that someone had the foresight to see were going to need to be replaced on the burden of the taxpayer. And so we're putting that money every year away. It was an excellent, excellent plan, and I wholeheartedly voted for it when it came up on town meeting floor. We should have done it years ago. But there's fourteen million dollars in it of our tax money, okay? And I say, what is the number? What is the number that we have to reach to be able to draw from that account and alleviate the taxpayer? If our needs have been justified tonight, and you've all alluded to that, what is the issue? I guess you can see it from one side, but I think the voters are going to tell you from the other side, no new taxes. We want these buildings with no new taxes. I also think, and I'm going to pose this question, Greg, through you to the town manager, I believe our operating budget last year, around a hundred and five million, would you say?
No, a hundred and nineteen.
Okay. If we have thirty-eight million between the two accounts, that's almost thirty percent, or maybe even over thirty percent, of saved in proportion to our operating budget. You are a very, very good saver, Mr. Town Manager, and I, and I compliment you. In addition, I consider it like a revolving account. So by the time this building and the last bit of money is withdrawn from the town accountant's office of the eight point seven five million, according to the way you've been saving, we will have replenished that money. It'll be put back into the account. And from all my readings of my Wall Street Journal every day, the economy's booming. I don't see anything out there that's going to change, but I'm not going to make any predictions here, because no one knows. You're absolutely right. But I think that this has to be seriously thought about, using the capital stabilization fund for which, and whatever projects you decide you're going to move forward with. The taxpayers' money is being put in that account, and I think you're going to hear from them, you as our board of directors, to tell you, it's time. It's time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would agree. It definitely needs to be seriously thought about, no question about it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Mr. McCoy? Chairman, I just got a little bit more commentary, but Jeff, what is our bond rating? Are we at double A, I believe?
Double A plus.
We're double A plus. And from my own ignorance, I did write down, like someone like Selectman O'Mahony said, yeah, it would be wonderful to find out, you know, what's the bond rating of the other communities. I did write that down, but I did not bring that. I just don't bring these numbers out of the top of my head here. This is like the Division of Local Services, Massachusetts Department of Revenue. So it's obviously when they certify free cash, that's what I'm reading from. And if I can from memory, I don't have it with me, but I believe Conkit and, for example, Wellesley, they have as of 2020, sixteen million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, and we have thirty-eight million, and I believe they're a triple A bond rating. You know, that's Wellesley, and I believe Conkit is, as well, with less money than, than we have. And I know in history, like Diane, you're showing our age, I remember, you know, relative to the middle school and a public safety building, they join things together. And I'm not saying we should put one in front of the other, but I would think the two biggest needs in this community is the substation in North Wilmington and also the senior center. I would love to see those two grouped together, because as you know, when we built that high school, right, you had the other high school there at the moment, and then why can't we build something here at the time being? And then obviously if we had a, you know, plow down the old Town Hall or not, I don't know. I mean, but from what I, from what I understand, the, wasn't one of the scenarios I thought from the master facilities plan, that I thought the Town Hall was going to be a location for a senior center? I think they did talk this, and maybe they did talk, I believe, Jeff, we talked about, I think, right out on Main Street, the St. Dorothy's site. I don't know where the focus was. Was it, you know better than I, Diane. Was that here at the Town Hall, I thought?
We placed the senior center many, many different areas, many different areas with available land. We tried looking at keeping it where it was, because we realized there was more land there, but upon further investigation, a lot of ledge. There's also some environmental issues there. There's a stream that runs the further up you go. So, but it was determined by the members that we felt the building should not be attached to any other building. It had to be a freestanding building. It, it wasn't going to work being attached to the Town Hall or some other building. It definitely had to be a freestanding building. So that, that came out right in the beginning when we were discussing the future here. The, the issue that you're saying where it could be placed came about because if St. Dorothy's land was being used for senior housing, then it would- Dorothy's land was being used for senior housing, then it would seem more practical to put the senior center building here. It would be close to the senior housing. That doesn't necessarily happen in many, many towns. We looked at Wakefield, we looked at Tewksbury, and we looked at Newburyport. They weren't near any senior housing, so that has no effect on it. But, the other scenario was looking at the Whitfield School site. But you have all the infrastructure here. You have sewer, you have gas. Two big items of construction here in this particular area that really makes it favorable for building. So, you know, but, I'm not the engineer, and I'm not the consultant. He may come back, or she may come back and say, you know, it's not going to work there. It's not going to work. You have to put it somewhere else, and I think there's other alternatives that are going to work better. Thus, you have that come out right away with the preliminary design, the same way Newburyport did when they were doing their building. It's not going to work to rehab this school. Not going to work. But, I think that we are strong in our feelings with regard to voting the entire project from conception to construction.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to wrap up right now, if I can, for 30 seconds. No, I think the bottom line is, I mean, sometimes you need to have a little jumpstart in life, and I understand, I think the two biggest priorities here in the town is a fire substation somewhere in North Wilmington, and obviously a senior center. I would love for us to lump those two together, like we did the middle school and the public safety building, and we worked together, we were able to accomplish that. Not too long ago, we did build the high school and we did the middle school, you know, about 15 years ago. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd, thank you.
Mr. Hull, would you want to add?
I just wanted to point out a couple of things. So, clearly, we, we will look very seriously about the capacity, if you will, to draw from the capital stabilization account, because there's no question it was established for the purpose of larger scale projects, so that we would have another fund to tap into for some of these more expensive projects. I would just note, as much as I think we collectively, and it certainly hasn't been just my doing, but should be very proud of the fact that the town has been able to salt away, if you will, significant dollars to Selectman McCoy's point about comparing some of the numbers. I think that, the document that he's referencing in terms of free cash, while we, we stand out very favorably, I would note that many communities, not just Wilmington, have other pots of money, if you will, that they put funds into. So the, the numbers that were cited in terms of the comparison with our 38 million, I suspect if you looked at the Concordes and the Wellesleys and the Lincolns, in addition to the free cash numbers that are referenced there, they also have additional money set aside in debt stabilization accounts, capital stabilization accounts, and other savings accounts, if you will. So, as much as I think we do, there's no question we look very favorably on that, and we have a significant amount of money set aside, we're not the only ones that are, are doing that. But, yeah, there's no question that we need to take a serious look at how much of that can be used in a, in a discreet manner, recognizing that we have multiple projects to follow.
Thank you. So, in closing to the commission, again, we, I think you've heard it well here, I hope that, very well put together presentation, well thought out. We, I think the members here, from what I've heard, think it's a very good idea, but we hope you can understand, we want to make sure we look at the logistics, have a chance to read the article, give the management team a chance to look at the article, so that we can come up with something to make sure we do it right. And then ultimately, the town can vote on it. And so, that's how I would see it going from here.
Has an article been drafted for review at this point?
If I can, I had an article here, if you want me to read it, Mr. Mahoney, I can make a motion if you want a second, and I put in the dollar and cents?
I'm just asking if there's an article for us to review for the future January meeting, because I'd also like to ask Mr. Hull, and I'm jumping ahead to communications a little bit, but I know you had referenced it, that you're going to be meeting with some department heads this week to talk about kind of some of these projects. If you could evaluate, and I know you can't give us exact figures, but I'm thinking kind of like how you do the credit score calculations, is there a way to calculate kind of if we depleted the fund by a certain amount, it still wouldn't affect our bond rating versus if we depleted it, you know, to another amount, it might affect it? And be able to report that back with kind of just guidelines as to, you know, because that's one of the questions, is how much is enough? So I think it would be helpful for us to understand, okay, having, you know, 38 million dollars in free cash in the capital stabilization fund gives us the double A plus rating. If we cross under, you know, a certain percentage threshold, it might, it might affect our rating going down. I think that would be helpful for us to understand, kind of where that, the thresholds are, so that when we're making these decisions on spending this money, which I agree, you know, if it's here and that's the purpose for it, we should be looking at how to utilize it. I just don't want to have us in a situation that we're, we have zero money in the bank and all of a sudden we have a need that we can't meet, and then we're looking at, at doing what none of us want to do.
I would absolutely agree. I think, if you remember back in August, you know, this entire board was unanimous and in support of making sure that the future of us, North Wilmington Substation is a priority as well for the community. I mean, it's been a priority of mine since I began doing this three years ago, you know? To make sure that an ambulance arrives at somebody's house on time is a top priority for this community. So, certainly that, and this is a great, great opportunity for the community to pursue a project like this, and we just want to make sure we manage them all, so we don't hurt ourselves down the line financially, so.
One more last comment here.
Please.
I know I'm doing a lot of talking tonight, but, you know, I understand what you're saying, Selectman Mahoney. Through you, Mr. Chairman, Jeff, when we are evaluated either by S&amp;P, Standard &amp; Poor, or Moody's, whoever it is that's going to give us the rating, I believe there's several categories that they look at, at the town. It isn't only free cash. Am I correct?
That's right, yes. It's a good point. So, there are a number of categories. One is certainly our, our savings, if you will, but they also look at what our pattern of expenditures is over time. There's elements as to how closely we follow our policies that we have, our financial policies that we have in place. They, they look at the demographics of the community. So a community like Concord and Andover and Wellesley and Lincoln, just by virtue of the fact that the incomes in those communities are much higher than the average income in Wilmington, I think the expectation is they have a greater ability to pay, so they kind of have a advantage in that respect. But there are a number of factors. So, to that point, we can certainly have the conversation with our financial advisor about the implications of, of some of this spending, but it's going to be hard to necessarily zero in to say that, you know, if we spend more than 15 million out of the savings account, that it's going to necessarily drop our rating. It's a combination of factors.
Right. And, and I would agree with you. I think through my investigation as well, I saw that there were several factors involved. And, would they also come back with seeing what your proposal is as far as how well you're saving? And, they look at your trending from year to year, so if you're able to put a minimum of four, sometimes maybe six million back in, like that revolving account, I'm sure that they look at things like that to see how you're saving?
Yeah, I think the, certainly trends, that's right, to the extent that we're demonstrating a continued ability to put money aside, it demonstrates a fiscal discipline that they like to see.
Do they, do they look at your buildings? Do they look at your aged buildings and take that into consideration?
It's, it's hard to say that they necessarily will take a look at our buildings per se, but I think they would, if they, if they looked at a community that was not putting money into its facilities to keep them at an adequate level. For example, you know, as much as we have buildings that are, that are challenged, we do, we have put money into our buildings, we've invested in some of the schools in terms of window projects and roofs and so on. If, if we were in a situation where we just weren't putting any money into our buildings, I think that would be problem, problematic for them.
Thank you.
I would really appreciate you folks coming in. Excellent presentation, and we look forward to continuing this dialogue.
Okay, thank you.
We, if there are any objections from my colleagues, we normally don't take questions until the public comment, but tis the season, why not? If you don't mind standing and, or, just, yes, if you could just identify yourself, please, you don't, you can, please, no, no, you can stay seated.
My name is Suzanne Clark, and I'm from Reddrow, Wilmington. Just a few comments. First of all, referring to the same table that Mr. McCoy referred to, we are ranked fifth in the state, five, out of 360 community communities in free cash, total free cash. Ahead of us are Boston, Cambridge, Wilbur, and Hingham. And you can imagine what the budgets are of Boston, Cambridge, and Hingham, and Wilbur, all which are cities. To, to Mr. Mahoney, I was on the 1999 Master Plan recommendation, 10.1.2 with the Master Plan was a new senior center, 1999. Since then, we built a middle school, a high school, a public safety building. It's our turn.
It's our turn.
It's our turn.
It's our turn.
All right, as far as the citing, I was also on the school committee then, and the choice was to build a high school on Salem Road, which turned into a middle school, Carter Lane. So that's my concern about picking a site. We actually flew it with that. So I would just reemphasize and say this, we had to choose a site that's not in our area of expertise, that's why I hire experts. But if you put this too low down, it's going to start interfering with the school's recommendations for new buildings. And I don't want to be in competition with another special interest group in town. So now is the time, and it is our turn. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Ma'am?
My name is Robert Theoros. I moved here in 1972, and I've been paying taxes, and I've paid into those funds. And I think it's time that we get a little something back for our money. I really think that it's time. It is our time. I have another question. I've heard you speak more than once, Mr. Carr, that you want that land up at St. Dorothy's for town hall. I don't see anybody offering that property for senior, anything, senior housing, senior center. I would like to know what each person's idea is. What are you saving it for? When we ask, could we have it, oh, we're saving that for future? What are you saving it for? Do you want it for a new town hall? Do you care if we ask for it for senior housing? How about you? I would like to know how everybody feels about that. That's all I have to say.
Anybody like to respond?
Yeah, I don't have a problem. Go ahead.
No, no, I, yeah, I, yeah, I think it's, I think, I think it's important to look at priorities and how we're going to set them, set them up.
But I want to know how they feel.
Okay. You want to know how they feel?
I respect you. You came forward and said exactly, I don't agree with it, but that's okay. We're, we all live here. We're going to try to get along. But I want to know how other people feel about the St. Dorothy's. Are you saving it for something? Is there something you really want it for? Do you care if we ask for it for senior housing or a senior center? How do you feel?
I want it for senior housing. I'm not saving it for anything, because I can't save it, I'm just one voice up here. But if I could wave my magic wand and, and do everything the way I would want to see it done in this town, that would be a spot for senior housing, because I think it's convenient location for many reasons for seniors to have housing there. My concern with that, by saying that, is then the senior center, they're going to want to put it here, and then where are we putting a new town hall? And that's why I say the domino effect, you know, and I, I don't, I don't want to set the domino effect in place until we have a thoughtful plan. That makes sense.
I hear you. I thank you for answering my question.
I would like to see senior housing there.
Ms. Reed?
Yeah. So, I, I think the big, the biggest hurdle that we have to do is the sequencing. And, I, perfect world, if we're viewing this in a silo, I think that this site is the perfect site for a senior center, the town hall site. You have walking trails around the fields, you have a pickleball court right there. It's close enough to centrally located, so that if you're living at any point in town, it's about the same distance to get here. For the St. Dorothy's site, I don't know if the town hall site is going to be where the senior center is. So maybe the senior center. Again, it really, when you put in one someplace, that affects where the, the rest of them are going to go. So I, particularly, my position is not saving it for something else. Affordable housing or senior hous-
I know what's coming up.
Ms. Theoros, you're asking a question, please just ask, if you let me answer. I'm trying to do the best that I can, because as we've discussed, we have different issues here, we have different needs. We have the senior center, that we've seemingly are in violent agreement is a priority. And we've kind of jumped ahead of the, of the game, and we've, we've talked an awful lot about how we're going to get to a new senior center, but I think we should really be focusing the discussion on what is really the, the order of priorities and where are things going to go? Because the, the Woodfield site was mentioned, the St. Dorothy's site has certainly been mentioned, this site has certainly been mentioned, the Fuzzell School Center site has been mentioned, Swain Green hasn't been mentioned tonight, but it's certainly all around the facilities master plan. And, which need is going to go in which location? And, when you start filling in one, that shifts the rest of the field, what's available and what's left as a need. So, I, I would like senior housing. I certainly think it is a priority, but I think a new senior center is a, in my opinion, should be what we're going forward with in the more immediate future.
We'll just go down.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I answered the question. I, I understand that, I, I answered it with a bunch of question marks, but I just want to make sure that, that you understand that-
Thank you.
And if I may, just to answer your question for myself only, I think it's been pretty well documented, every news media we have out in the last three years in the campaign in my time on this board, that the three major priorities for myself is the substation, the senior center, and the Wildwood School. Set it all along consistently, and as far as the St. Dorothy's castle, if any of those three projects made fiscally responsible, if that would be fiscally responsible to put any of those three projects on that site, I'd be in favor of it. I would recall that when I first arrived on the board in 2016, we had a public forum at the high school at the time, was the new high school auditorium, talking specifically about senior housing at St. Dorothy's castle, and I think like 10 people showed up, so we didn't, we didn't take action at that night.
That meeting was moved many times, and it was horrific weather that night, and that's why you didn't have many people show up.
Again, I think that's, we didn't take any action, right?
I firmly believe that is why.
Yeah. Anybody else?
I'll take a jab at it real quick. I support, you know, a senior center here at the town hall. We can look at other areas in the town when you talk about senior housing, but realistically, what is really senior housing? The only way we're going to strike a deal for any type of senior housing, if the town donates a property to a private developer. And let me tell you, you're still not going to meet real, true, affordable senior housing. Real, true, affordable senior housing is based on social security income. I've been saying this since day one, that's the only way that you're going to able to afford true affordable senior housing, is on, based on social security. That's it.
Ma'am?
Thank you. Just, just a couple of things.
If you could just identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Deborah Russo.
Thank you. And your address?
902 Lord's Court.
Thank you, just for the record, thank you.
So, what everyone has said so far is that they're really, really, really for the senior center, but I don't get it. Because what I hear is, we really want the senior center, but, but this, but that. Talking about the future, I'm just going to ask you to look at this audience and think about what kind of future, you know, tick-tock, tick-tock, tick-tock. You know, these are not kids. We, we've been in town forever, and we've paid for so many things forever. And now, to Suzanne's point, I look at, I went on to, I got a copy of the Department of Revenue Free Cash, you know, and I exported it to Excel, and I did a sort. of Revenue Free Cash, you know, and I exported it to Excel, and I did a sort, two thousand and nineteen, highest to lowest. And like Suzanne said, we're number five, Boston, Cambridge, Hingham, Wolverne, Wilmington for money. Thanks for saving it, but open the wallet, you know, let's use that. At the, the last Elder Services Commission meeting, Mr. McCoy, you had said, oh, let's get everything done at once. And I was like, no, no, feasibility study. But you know what? I think you were right. Because if you have to keep coming back to town meetings and say, okay, now we want money for this part, and now we want money for that part, more and more needs are going to crop up. Give us the money. Give us all of the money. Let us find a consultant who's going to find a site. We don't know what the perfect site is. Personally, I don't even like this site, but there's going to be-
Big problem.
Well, I don't, see, the thing is, with this site, then you're like, you know, where's town hall going to go? What, how are we going to do business? No, no, no. Senior center, only the senior center. We'll have a consultant, they're going to find the perfect place, then we're going to go forward from there.
Sir?
Mr. Chairman, Judge Allen, Seven Stonehenge Drive. Couple of points. I think the seniors want to leave here tonight, knowing whether this board is going to sponsor an article at the annual town meeting. And they need that decision. And they need that decision before February seventh. The significance of February seventh is the deadline for submitting a petition article. So you owe it to these people not to delay them till February seventh. You need to let them know one way or the other, so then they can do what they need to do. Now, as far as free cash going up, it's gone up since two thousand and fifteen, it's gone up by like eight billion dollars. Guess what? The tax rate's going up too, and we're not doing anything. We're not, we're not building anything. Let's do something. As far as writing an article, Mr. Mahoney, that's not their job, that's your job. Write the article. They're asking you to write the article and sponsor it. And if you're not going to do it, let them know, and they can take appropriate action before February seventh.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Just if I could just respond to that, a couple of things. Number one, I hope you can appreciate that we certainly, I'm charged as chair to make sure that we obey, obey the laws here. We have to be in compliance with open meeting law. A vote like that is not on our agenda tonight, that would be a violation of the law. So certainly, I think hopefully you can understand that we're receptive to the idea of doing that, and I've already committed to putting it on a future agenda item so that can be taken up. But you understand that there's rules that we have to abide by in terms of when we can vote on things, and, and so that would be my response to that.
As long as you give them time, if you don't decide to do it, they can do what they need to do.
Sure. And we have two meetings before February seventh. We meet on the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh, I believe, the dates. And that doesn't mean we couldn't meet on another additional date if we had to. And then lastly, we as the five volunteers don't actually write up the address because we have legal counsel who, that, for, so I just want to make that clear.
No, she was asking if we had an article. We don't-
I thought it was a good question by her, I didn't know she had something prepared.
It was referenced as if there was an article to review. I was just asking if there had been an article already written to review. I wasn't suggesting that someone should have, I would, it was just stated that an article needed to be reviewed by legal counsel, and I wanted to confirm that I didn't miss seeing an article that's already created. That's all I was asking for.
I got one right here if you want.
I'd like it to be a little bit more formalized than handwritten by you, Mr. McCoy, if that's okay.
I haven't been wrong yet.
Anybody else like to be heard? Ma'am?
I'm here in here on Twelve Manning Street. I've been here about fifty-four years, paying taxes, et cetera, like everybody else. About three years ago, I was at several meetings from the planning board, the master planning board, and to put everybody's mind at ease, they keep talking about the domino effect. Basically, everybody seemed to come up with the idea of this site in St. Dorothy's to be either the senior center or senior housing between the two. Town hall would be down at the common, where in my opinion it belongs, to conform with the ambience of the town. That's what the town center is, basically, and to me, that's where it belongs. The library was also included in the substation. Boards went up in the library, they went up in the senior center and everywhere else. People voted on it, and the majority of the people seemed to go for that kind of a plan. Since then, it's been, it's disappeared, nobody's talking about it. Now, senior housing isn't even included in the five events that we're working at now. But just because of the domino effect keeps coming up, that kind of keeps coming up. What happened over the last three years? We did all this, we wasted three years.
My response to that would be that I think it's been a priority of this board, and I don't want to speak for everybody, but I feel obligated as their chair that in the last several months, we've talked about this issue more than we have, to your point, in the last three years. That committee did some fine work. We were finally able to get them all, almost all of them, together to present, and certainly we want to make sure we do our complete due diligence, and that's why we've invited you folks here, which we think is really important. And so that's why we're having the conversation.
And we still don't have an answer as of going on the town meeting. It's time it did.
I think we'll have an answer pretty soon.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Sir?
Hello, seven Sheridan Road. I'd just like to double check with Selectman McCoy on the values in some of these other towns. We have thirty-eight million dollars. When I see a town like Conker, Lincoln, Wellesley, Notlandville, all rich counties with a small little cash, what are we going to, like Diane here says, what are we keeping it for?
Well, again, though-
Let's use it, I mean, she said earlier, we all pay that tax.
They must be using their money.
You know?
But, but again, just to be clear, just to be clear, though-
Go ahead.
The, the point that he is making is, is a valid one, that these other communities have free cash that is lower than ours, but they also have, as we do, other, other savings accounts. So that isn't, the Concord, the fact that Concord's number is whatever it is, is not indicative of all the money that they have salted away, I'm sure. If you looked at their, their capital stabilization account, their debt stabilization account, I suspect it's maybe closer to what we have in total.
I drive a bus by time. Those communities are very, very wealthy. And above would you say an exceed of cash statement accounts, not on that. Their reserve fund is very, very low compared to what we have, small town like Wilmington. We are all working, paying our bills, et cetera, so on. The budget department is doing their job. We gradually increase over the period of years. Let's put it to use. Even if you want to fire a house, go for it, let's, let's use it. Just, that's my opinion.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to be heard?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to be heard.
Anybody else who's been here the entire time and spent their evening with us? Sir?
I would just like to make the point that the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to be. As Diane said, the price from one year to the next year, I don't think will-
Well, it's from two thousand and seventeen to the end of two thousand and nineteen, we went from six point seven to eight point four five.
So the longer we wait, and if you're going to do two or three projects, the more money it's going to cost in the long run.
So it sounds like the management team has some homework to do. So Jeff, if you don't mind putting together some numbers, I'd like to announce right now that I'd like to have on the next agenda that we just got, take this issue up at our next meeting, which will be January thirteenth, I believe.
That's right.
We can give the management team, although we have Christmas and New Year's in between, give you some time to come up with some more options, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everyone. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to call for a short recess while we let the room clear out. Is everybody okay with that? Can we take a quick motion to adjourn for a recess? Second, all in favor of a short recess? Mr. Kyra? Sheen Adam, a short recess, thank you. And we'll welcome our town engineer, Mr. Paul Looney. Paul, sorry, we're just a little bit behind your seven fifty-five appointment. But we thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Just want to quickly review a memo that I had issued to the Board of Selectmen last week. It's an update on street acceptance. At our November twelfth meeting, we had-
Excuse me.
Brian, would you mind?
Door shut, sorry.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
At the November twelfth Board of Selectmen hearing, we had presented a concept for a more affordable cost sharing, street acceptance program. Essentially where town would pay for the costs of improvement, where the residents would pay the upfront costs associated with just laying out the way or the street acceptance process. Question was raised by the board on whether or not betterments could be assessed for those upfront costs. We consulted with our legal counsel, and the answer is yes, they could be assessed, given if the appropriate documentation was received to pass that through. We also heard that evening from Representative Robertson, and separately, we heard from our legal counsel to review the town of Dedham's street acceptance policy. They had recently passed, in I believe, two thousand and like fourteen or fifteen, they passed a bylaw, and the Board of Selectmen approved policy and procedures. And I've provided that in this memorandum, too. Dedham's very similar to Wilmington. They have about two hundred unaccepted ways in town, that's, we have like two hundred and forty-five. They have, it constitutes about nineteen or eighteen point something miles of roadway in Dedham, and a majority of them were built prior to the town adopting any formal roadway standards or construction standards, which again is similar to Wilmington. So I enclosed, I enclosed for your review, three documents. The first is the article at Denham Town Meeting from two thousand and fourteen, that it's an amendment to their revised bylaws. Enclosure two is the town's road acceptance policy and procedures. And enclosure three is something they posted online, it's just frequently asked questions. I found it very beneficial when I was researching their, their policy. I can just give you a brief overview of that policy. I do go through all the finer points, or at least summarize the finer points of the process in the memorandum, and if, or desires, I can certainly go through them, but just on a kind of twenty thousand foot up level here, I can go through what the process entails. It's through their Board of Selectmen per state statutes. They don't deviate much from the state, actually, they don't deviate at all from the state statutes. But on a case-by-case basis, their board has the discretion to assess betterments for the entire cost, the upfront cost, and the cost of improvements or not. And if you read their frequently asked questions, in most cases, the town will pay one hundred, they do expect the town to pay one hundred percent of the cost of improvements. They go on to say there may be some cases where the town will only pay a portion of the cost, in these cases, the town would assess a betterment. What they do is categorize their roadways into groups, you know, group one, two, three, four, and so on and so forth, just different tiers. They have different conditions for those groups, and that's how they weigh the general public benefit for expending those funds. In discussions with their engineering department, they have an estimated timeline of about eighteen months to go through the process. Once roadways are accepted through this process, they're added to a backlog of all roadways awaiting improvements, which, according to their frequently asked questions, is estimated at a ten- to twelve-year backlog. I would imagine Wilmington would be in a similar situation, but it's something we would have to review with our operations division of Public Works. Certainly not an expert in Dedham's policies and procedures, really the extent of my knowledge is here in this memo and what I've researched and enclosed. But I'd be happy to take any initial questions the board may have, if you want to just read through this, and over the next couple of weeks, come up with some questions on this policy. If you find it favorable, I can certainly be the point person for the board and, and be a liaison and, and get the answers you'd be looking for. So again, if you'd like me to go through the entire process, I'm happy to do so, but for the sake of time, I figured I'd just provide a general overview. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I think this is an excellent overview that you provided us with, and I appreciate you continuing to stay on this. I know you and your department and others have continued to work on this over the last couple of weeks, and I know that you will continue to do so as we move forward, and I hope that you'll continue to keep us apprised of new findings like this, the one you provided, provided us here this week is excellent, so I appreciate that.
No problem.
Does anybody have any comments or questions?
I just had an initial question that came up, and I didn't see it answered here, so I'm not sure if I'm missing it or if it's just deemed something different. I think I alluded to it the last time. When there's a paper road involved, when, when part of a unaccepted road also includes kind of a paper road, how would that be impacted here? Because you have to get a hundred percent of the abutters, so would it be kind of the abutters of the paper road who technically, I guess, own that area that would need to do it?
That's a great question. I would say it's just for the constructed portion of the road. We don't want to extend, so if the, if you have a situation where there's a constructed roadway and it ends, and then you have a paper street for the remaining with, assumingly there'd be vacant parcels.
Right.
I think you could end it at, you would, you would end it at the constructed portion. What you'd want to, I think, discuss with legal counsel is, discuss with legal counsel is if there are any ramifications to that. I don't believe so, but there may be just another, something, a plan drawn up that would discontinue the remainder of the way, or the way the land then would get divided back to the property owners that have frontage along it. But they also have rights to, to extend it if, in the future.
Well, and I think that was the, the ultimate concern that was kind of brought to me was if the paper road extended to town-owned land, is there a way to make sure that when, if, if it became a public way, that that wouldn't kind of open up the town-owned land for future development? Or, you know, people who like living on a private dead end, that technically is a paper road, is there any way to safeguard that paper road becoming part of the public road that could then be developed in the future?
Well, I don't know, but what I do like about this policy is that it's not a broad stroke. It is a case-by-case basis that the board would consider each way. I didn't mention that you brought up one good point, though, that Dedham does, they, they require, like all other municipalities, I've researched, one hundred percent of the support of the abutters along that way, because you, within that constructed portion, you can't have gaps of, of acceptance, right? Because you need to acquire the rights within the ways, the constructed way in its entirety. But that was one thing I found attractive about this particular policy, was that you're looking, the board has the ability to look at each one of these cases where they, they might be situations we're not thinking of, I don't know, like two corner lots and vacant lots behind it, and that would only benefit, let's say, a developer, something if they petitioned it. So you would have that ability to, and it would still also go to town meeting as well, to town meeting.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Just one point, if I could. The, if there is a desire by the board to take action on some type of policy with respect to dealing with unaccepted ways for the upcoming fiscal year at this town meeting, I think it would be advisable to give us some direction at your meeting on the thirteenth of January, which is the next meeting, because we'll, obviously, we're in the process of putting budgets and articles together, and so we would need to get some kind of direction from the board by that meeting for, for this coming town meeting.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you, same to you.
All right. All right.
To the Board as well.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. That concludes our appointments scheduled for tonight. We'll move into communications, and we'll start off with some good news regarding the tax rate 2020. Mr. Hall.
Yes, this is a memo from Brian Perry, the Finance Director, Town Accountant, just noting that the tax rate has been certified by the Department of Revenue, and the rate for residential is $13.58. The rate for commercial, industrial, and personal is $30.59, which those rates are just slightly lower than what Karen Rashes, the Principal Assessor, was projecting.
Good news.
Next, under Correspondence, is also a memo from Brian Perry. This is a follow-up to the request for an update concerning Munis. Munis is the enterprise software that the town, town meeting in 2018 approved. You'll recall, at the time, there was concern amongst staff, the town accountant, myself, the treasure collector, and others that are on the financial end of dealing with matters, that the system that we have been using now since 2010 was, had been purchased by another company, and there was indications coming from them, soft right, that they would not be adding to their system or providing upgrades to the system. So there was concern over whether, how long the system would be in place, and so it prompted a request for authorization at town meeting. Mr. Perry notes in his memo that the town meeting approved $941,800 for the enterprise software, and that part of the reoccurring cost is a $199,216 charge. This is an annual charge over a three-year period, which started in fiscal 19. In addition, there's fees in the amount of $344,152. Those are implementation fees. He further notes that while we had all the best intentions of beginning the implementation process in fiscal 19, we had a number of key players in the process depart in the fall of 2018. The former Assistant Town Manager, who was really the primary point person, as well as others in my office, and as a result, there were meetings that I had with then accountant, town accountant Mike Morris and Pam McKenzie, and the decision was made to postpone any further work on the project until we could get staffed up again. And so it's noted here that there was a hiatus in terms of going forward. In the, at the same time, we hired the firm of, accounting firm of Clifton Larson and Allen to help put together the, update the chart of accounts, and it's noted in the memo. And as a consequence, he goes on to note that at this point, the plan is for the general ledger to go live, so to speak, on 7/1 of 2020. Payroll is slated to go live on January 1 of 2021. And these dates are used because in the first case, the general ledger coincides with the fiscal year, payroll coincides with the tax year for payroll purposes. And then he also notes the costs to date that have been incurred as a result of this project. $23,929 for CLA services regarding the chart of accounts, $411,808 for Tyler Technologies, which was two of the three, first three years of the annual payments. $13,376 has been expended for implementation and hardware, with a little over $330,000 remaining to be spent. And then $529,991 remains to be expended under the contract. That is...
Through the chair, just a question. I don't know if Mr. Perry's in the audience. I guess what really bothers me is that we're paying the annual license fee of $199,216 over three years for a system that we don't have up. And are we talking to Tyler to see if we can negotiate something in that, you know, to extend that out? Because it was my understanding that that money was for maintenance of the system, and we don't have the system up. So why are we paying maintenance for something that we don't have? And should we be talking to them to say, hey, look at, we've paid you, you know, good faith because we signed an agreement, but we don't have the system up and running? Can this be applied down the road?
I guess there's a lot of different things to try to touch on there. The first is, yes, there has been discussions between the town and Tyler Technologies. It's still in the preliminary stages. There's, I guess, a couple of different fronts, if you want to look at it. I guess just from the start, the town had entered into that contract with the agreement of paying roughly $200,000 a year annually. September of 2018, September 2019, September 2020 were the dates that those three payments were scheduled to be issued. The town has acted in good faith with those payments assessed Tyler, to be honest with you. The reason those figures came about essentially, it was a quote of purchasing the software as a service from Tyler Technologies. The cost would vary depending on essentially the scope of what you had purchased for, the modules, and as well as the determination of whether you wanted to host the, essentially the data and the operations of the system internally or have Munis hosted. The cost, I don't know what the answer is exactly for the total cost of the contract would have been if in 2018 the town had decided to have the system hosted internally here. If that were the case, 85 percent of the total payment would have been made within a month of signing that contract, and then the remaining 15 percent would have been paid out 180 days later, not over three annual installments. There would have been other costs as well, if the town chose to go that route, potentially personnel, definitely hardware and equipment, storage, and potentially other costs to go along with running a massive server and computer operation. But essentially, to get back to, I guess, the other question, is there has been, been questions broached to Tyler Technologies about the potential of seeing what we can do to potentially apply any of those payments to the future of the town. As I said before, did enter into that contract willingly with Tyler Technologies to pay on those terms. It is customary in their contract to have clients that host their data with Munis or with Tyler. Off-site to pay essentially in the three-year terms upfront, even if you don't have the system. What's going on in the background now is, I believe, there's four environments that they're working on development, which is part of those licensing fees as well as an implementation, a training, a test, and ultimately, the live environment that our users will be using come next summer. There's work that needs to go on, obviously, to develop, to test, to play around, make sure the system looks like it's supposed to, make sure users are comfortable. Eventually, so they can be trained in it, so they can be tested in it, to make sure the data works as it should. So it's a long process, and those are part of the costs as well for, for the upfront costs. But I do fully understand the reason for the frustrations that the town's paid essentially $400,000 so far out of the contract, and we're barely along the process. But I do honestly believe that it was the right decision made at the time to put the brakes on. We had key personnel who, I believe there was probably five of the eight people in the room that had decided at the time of the contract being signed in August of 2018, that essentially, we're leaving or we're on the way out. And to put the time and effort in them, from them, to develop a system they weren't using, they couldn't understand to some degree, would have potentially caused more problems down the road for the users. We've had meetings, we're working in full force to work with Tyler, work with the staff here, to develop the system as we believe it should be best utilized. We have people who have used the system before, so there's less of a learning curve for those in the decision-making room to determine what we need and how we need to do it to go forward. So I think we're on track at this point. It was admittedly a rocky start and a rough start to get going, but I do believe the decisions that were made have put us in a better position now, despite the outlay of cash.
Just to follow, thank you for that, and I'm glad you're looking into talking with them about these monies. But are these also, and I don't know if the manager would know, are these additional maintenance fees or licensing fees that, they're close to $200,000, that's being paid over three years? Is that going to be an ongoing thing, or is that just a one-time, three years, and it's done?
No, once we get the product optimal, then we will have an annual licensing fee that we'll pay to Tyler Technologies.
In the same amount?
I don't, I assume it's going, the amount could change depending on, as we go through the implementation, if we decide the, basically, the list of services that we had purchased from the get-go. If there's items that we don't need there, we're still not going to want to have them spend time and effort to develop, convert them, and then roll them out to a system that we're not going to be using them anyway.
So there's some flexibility.
Yes, there is certainly that understanding, and I've talked to their representative as well, and she understands that, and she appreciates that. And it makes sense that if there's going to be pieces of the software we're not going to use, that doesn't serve anyone to jump through hoops to have them develop it and have us not use it, and have us pay for a product that we're not happy with.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Appreciate you being here. Merry Christmas.
You, too. Thank you.
Okay. Next is memorandum from me with regard to the facilities master plan. There was a request as to my personal opinion about the plan. Certainly, there's been a lot of discussion already tonight about the plan as it relates to the senior center, so I won't go into great detail, other than to say that, in general, I believe that the plan that was put forward back, finalized in January 2018, is a sound plan. I think the, you know, two caveats to that, one being, at the time, the, because of issues with gathering the data on fire response times, that really was not part of the plan. And through the good efforts of Deputy Kavanaugh and Tony LaVerde, our GIS person, they were able to parse that information out, and it clearly establishes the need for a substation. So I believe that needs to be in the mix as well. What complicates things certainly is with respect to the schools. Clearly, the Wildwood School has come to the forefront. I think even if you look at the facilities plan, the folks that did the study characterized it as a building that was in poor condition. There's no question that we need to move that to the front of the pack. But I think before strictly focusing on the Wildwood School, there needs to be consideration of the, again, the domino effect. What does that mean for other schools? Is there going to be a desire to consolidate schools? Those things need to be all part of the consideration before we make a commitment to one particular school. And as was noted in a prior meeting, we are pursuing the filing of statements of interest on all of the remaining six schools, which will be brought back to the Board for your review and sign-off before those are submitted.
Thank you.
Next is correspondence from Dan Deutsch, who is our special counsel with regard to the Olin property, in particular with respect to the proposal with the Surface Transportation Board, New England Transrail, and Wilmington Intermodal. This is basically a status report that's required every, every three months by the other parties, as well as the town, and he's indicating that essentially, we're in agreement with NET and WWI's last letter, which basically states that we're on hold in terms of any further discussions about this alternative proposal pending the interim record of decision by EPA. I'm looking forward to consider...
We have one more communication, Mr. Hall.
Yes, Verizon, sorry about that. Just a advisory with regard to program, a program change that is going to be happening. The TVP Palania Channel 1776 is to be removed. They are providing notice to their subscribers, and for those who are looking to access the channel availability, they can do that by going to verizon.com backslash biosTVchannels.
Thank you. We have six items for Board to consider.
That's right. First item being a request from the town clerk for the appointment of election workers. There are quite a number of them. I'm not sure what the pleasure of the chair is in terms of citing the names all individually, or there's probably about 30 or so individuals on this list, but I think the Board has it before you.
I think everybody, has anybody not had an opportunity to look at the names? Okay, I think we can take them up as a group. There's no objections? I'm hoping that's a theme here tonight, by the way.
So I would suggest that the Board make a motion to authorize these appointments for election workers.
I will move that we accept the recommendation of our town clerk and authorize the list that she provided to be the election workers for 2020.
One second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? With great thanks to the folks willing to do this for us. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next, under Board to Consider, is a request that originally was generated by resident Jeff Cranford, was directed to the Chair of the School Committee, Jennifer Bryson, and I'll just read it into the record. Ms. Bryson, I am sure that I don't need to list for this committee the accomplishments, the dedication, and the gifts brought to the Wilmington Public Schools by Ms. Barbara Mehdi. Anyone who has worked with her or had their kids impacted by her work over the years knows how incredible she has, how incredibly she has served us. As a small jester, I'd like to ask that the school committee, or ask the school committee that they request the select persons, that an article be placed on the warrant of the next town meeting. The request contained in the article would be to name and dedicate the music room in the Wilmington High School in Ms. Mehdi's honor. If this were a piece of legislation, I'd list my cosponsors' names here. Suffice to say that everyone to whom I've reached out so far has been fully supportive of this, of this. When this has been favorably disposed, I will lead an effort to fund a suitable plaque or nameplate of a design approved by the school committee or any, anyone they designate, which can be mounted so that the town and the school will not bear the cost of this. And then subsequent to that is an email that was directed to the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. This is from Chairman Bryson. I am writing to inform you that the school committee voted to support Mr. Cranford's request to name the music room at the Wilmington High School after Ms. Barbara Mehdi. We are now requesting that an article be placed on the warrant of this next town meeting to name and dedicate the room in Wilmington High School in her honor. Please let me know if you need any additional information, and I would just note that Mr. Cranford is here this evening.
And we thank Mr. Cranford for his efforts. I watched the meeting, School Committee, December 4th, in which you sat through what I thought was a lengthy meeting. You are back here again, determined. It was a unanimous vote by the school committee to support this proposal, and so, Mr. Cranford, we thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll open it up. If anybody would like to make a motion or offer a comment? a comment?
I'd like to make a motion that the board of Selectmen placed on the warrant an article at the next town meeting requesting that the music room at the Wilmington High School be named and dedicated for Ms. Barbara Mehdi.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? It's unanimous. And so, we will have, your office, administration will draw something up and have legal counsel take a look at it?
That's right.
And then the board, this board will have the opportunity to review it when we see all the articles in a few weeks.
Yes, that's right.
And then it will be brought forth this spring at town meeting. Mr. Cranford, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Merry Christmas to you.
I tried to get everybody to stay, but I don't know.
Thank you again.
Next, under board to consider is the recommendations of the inhabitant bylaw study committee that were brought forward at the prior Selectmen's meeting, looking to see if the board wishes to take any action on these. Again, just noting that as we prepare for the upcoming town meeting, looking to get some direction on how to proceed.
I did have one question about this before we move forward. Did the bylaw committee get a chance to reconvene since the time we talked about this?
I'm not aware that they did, but I can certainly check.
No.
Okay. I just wondered if we ought to, I think we had a lot of feedback that night, each member. I didn't know if we should bounce that back, the ball backs to them, and see if they wanted to digest what we had to say, if we could write to them formally. If they missed the meeting, we could obviously direct them to the replay. But for those who may not be able to, weren't here, or didn't get to see the meeting, I didn't know if they wanted the chance to respond to some of the things we said, or digest some of the thoughts we had before we went forward. But that was just kind of my line of thinking there on the onset.
Yeah, I would agree with the chairman that there were a lot of, there was a lot of input, and there was a lot of suggestions to go back and maybe change a word here or there for the bylaw committee to take another look at it, to see if they agreed with some of the suggestions that the Selectmen proposed. And if not, and then bounce it back again to us. We have a little bit of lead time, I think, on this.
Full disclosure, I did receive a call today from one of the volunteer members who kind of was hoping that would be the case, they could get back and have a chance to respond to some of the things that were discussed at our last meeting.
I don't think that'd be the issue. There were some things that members liked, some of the things the members disliked. And, you know, absolutely, I think it's a, I think the, Jeff, the clerk, she's coming from surgery, isn't she?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, we might want to wait for her to recover a little bit before we meet, because she knows her stuff. I got to tell you, she's really good.
So, being a member on the board, Mr. McCoy, would it help if we were, if Mr. Hall was to draft some type of short memo to the board with some of the comments we had last time?
Sure.
And certainly-
You mean the bylaw study committee?
Correct.
Yes.
Gets back to the bylaw study committee. And fairness to you, Mr. Hall, I don't expect you to remember every word that was said. If there was something that really stood out to you as a member, I would encourage you to reach out to the manager to make sure that that was included in his memo.
Yeah, I think between that and the minutes from that meeting, we should be able to pull together the input from the board.
I kind of monopolized some of the discussion when we spoke about that a few weeks ago, and I did outline my feelings in an email. But I think it would be appropriate to kind of start a dialogue, I guess, and have the bylaw review committee take a look at not only what I felt, but what other members felt, and get back to us as to what their positions are.
Certainly, I think they spent a lot of time and effort putting that together, so I think we owe it to them to be able to reply and hear what our thoughts were.
Again, I think the deadline, just given that we're approaching the deadlines here for town meeting articles, the board meets on the 13th of January, and then the budget presentation is made on the 27th of January. So unless there's a, there's an intention to have a meeting, you know, in the middle of that, between the 13th and the 27th, you know, I think the idea should be to get any response back from the bylaw study committee before the 13th, so that the board can decide at that meeting how to proceed.
I think that's going to be challenging, given the fact that the clerk is out on a medical leave, and we've got some busy couple weeks coming up ahead. But I think, certainly if we have to take it up in addition to the 27th's presentation, then we have to. I think we owe it to that committee to, if we have to stay a little later that night, we ought to owe it to them. They put in a lot of time. And if we have to explore the idea of having an additional meeting, then we can certainly discuss that at a 13th meeting on the 13th.
Sounds good. So I'll make a motion to table this board to consider item to the January 27th Selectmen's meeting, to a time certain.
And will you include that we send correspondence to that bylaw committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of tabling it? It's unanimous.
Okay. So this would be the board to consider approval of the 2020 licenses for alcoholic beverages, automatic amusements, billiard room, class-one vehicle sales, class-two vehicle sales, common victular, and entertainment licenses.
Does anybody have any objections with taking up this group together, with the exception of maybe one establishment that we might have to abstain from? Does anybody have any objection to that?
No.
Do not.
So we would take up two votes on this one for alcohol? Would be one, everything but Michael's place, and then one for Michael's place? Would that be appropriate?
Certainly, the board could do that.
Any objection?
Do you want them read into the record, or?
So are we going to take them up in categories like club, package to a restaurant? Are you going to take them all up as alcohol?
I'm open to any suggestions on how we should proceed here.
That is the quickest time?
How's that sound, right?
Yeah, no, I agree the quickest time, but I almost think we should take them up, I hate to say this, as categories, as club, package store, restaurant.
I think it's a good suggestion.
So just for those in the audience or in watching, under all alcohol for club, there are two, Fordham Associates, Inc., DBA Aleppo Temple, and then 4982 Building, Associates, Inc., DBA Knights of Columbus.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? It's unanimous for the club licenses.
And just as a note, the suggestion is that once all this is completed after the meeting, that the board will be asked to sign the various licenses. Next is all alcohol package stores. There are five. Average LLC, DBA Colonial Park Liquors, 211 Lowell Street Corp., DBA East Gate Liquors, Shoprite Liquors, Inc., DBA Lys Country Store, Supertarget Liquor of Massachusetts, DBA Target, NR Wilmington, Inc., DBA Wilmington Plaza Wine and Spirit.
Is there a motion to approve the package store licenses?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made. And seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
And next is all alcohol restaurant. There are nine. Restaurant of Boston LLC, DBA 99 Restaurant and Pub.
I'm sorry, do you want to take them up with the exception of one, and then we'll take up that Michael's place afterwards?
Yes.
Thank you. So you can continue on.
Greensauce, Inc., DBA Casablanca Mexican Restaurant. Next is A&amp;C Stone, Inc., DBA Golden Ginger Restaurant. Pacific Sunshine, Inc., DBA Pacific Grove. Poncho's, Inc., DBA Poncho's Cantina. BGP Tavern LLC, DBA Red Heat Tavern. C&amp;C Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as Rocco's Restaurant, and LMC, Inc., DBA Tremezos, LLM, rather, Inc., DBA Tremezos.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? It's unanimous.
And then the final one under this category would be Salmon Barra, Inc., DBA Michael's Place.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Motion's made.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Four for it, and one abstained.
We have one automatic amusement device, and this is for K-1 Speed, Inc., 40 Fordham Road, 18 devices. This would be for the renewal of 13 devices and the addition of five new devices.
Is there a motion for these licenses?
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? It's unanimous.
And then under billiard room, K-1 Speed, Inc., Fordham Road, they have four tables.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made. Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous.
Next, we have class-one vehicle sales, and there are two. Dubie Auto Group, Inc., DBA Bill Dubie Hyundai, and Semino Automotive, Inc., DBA Cornerstone Automotive and Cornerstone Mitsubishi.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion's made. And seconded. Any discussion? Seeing zero. All in favor? It's unanimous.
We have class-two vehicle sales. There are nine. Wilmington Shell, Inc., DBA Advanced Auto Technologies, B&amp;L Enterprises, DJ Auto Sales, Forest Auto Repair, Heavy Equipment Connection, Inc., Imperial Auto LLC, J&amp;E Service Corp., Triple Nickel Auto Body and Repair LLC, and Naya, Inc., DBA Z&amp;S Gas and Service.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? It's unanimous. Common victular license.
Common victulars, there's 41.
Do we want to take up 40, and then one by itself?
Yes, I think that would be advisable. So we have 99 Restaurant of Boston LLC, DBA 99 Restaurant and Pub, ANJ AM Corp., DBA A&amp;J's Kitchen, Fordham Associates, Inc., DBA Aleppo Temple, Sales LLC, DBA As Good As It Gets Cafe, Masteron Corporation, and LBK LLC, DBA Burger King, Hong Tay, Inc., DBA China Whack, Krish Convenience, Inc., DBA The Corner Store, Country Chef Restaurant, Adam Donuts, Inc., DBA Duncan, DJQ Duncan, DJQ Donuts LLC, DBA Duncan, Hannan Donuts LLC, DBA Duncan, Jane Marie Donuts LLC, DBA Duncan, C&amp;C Donuts, Inc., DBA Duncan, Wilmington Donuts, Inc., DBA Duncan, A&amp;C Stone, Inc., DBA Golden Ginger Restaurant, Wilmington Heavenly Donuts LLC, DBA Heavenly Donuts, DDK Baking LLC, DBA Josie's Bakery, Zhangha Inc., DBA Lynn Garden, K-1 Speed, Inc., 4982 Building Associates, Inc., DBA Knights of Columbus, Dulzac LLC, DBA La Rosas, TH McCoy Restaurant Group LLC, DBA McDonald's Restaurant, Mona's Kitchen, Nick's Pizza Roast Beef and Sub, Pacific Sunshine, Inc., DBA Pacific Grove, Poncho's, Inc., DBA Poncho's Cantina, PR Restaurant LLC, DBA Panera Bread, KQ, Inc., DBA Peters Pizza Roast Beef and Seafood, BJP Tavern LLC, DBA Red Heat Tavern, St. Moses, Inc., DBA Rizzo's Roast Beef and Pizza, C&amp;C Restaurant Group, Inc., DBA Rocco's Restaurant, Charlie's Two Corporation, and DBA Samar's Super Beef, Starbucks Corporation, DBA Starbucks Coffee, 337 Main Street, Inc., DBA Subway, Watertown Enterprises, DBA Subway, CDC Diner, DBA Sunnyside Cafe, Target Corporation, LLM, Inc., DBA Tremezos, WF Pizza Company, LLC, DBA Tremezos Pizzeria, Gelv Enterprises, LLC, DBA Wilmington House of Pizza.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
And I fear to say, I think you might have skipped Sweet Pizza.
Oh, did I?
No, it's on the bottom.
Oh, not renewing, Sweet Pizza, that's right. So two not-renewing, Mo Dash Cafe on Upton Drive, and Sweet Pizza Balladvale Street.
And these all have positive recommendations by the board of health that should be mentioned, too.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion's made.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? It's unanimous. Michael's place?
Yes, so there is one additional one here. San Barra, Inc., DBA Michael's Place.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? There's four in favor and one's abstained.
We have entertainment licenses, of which there are six. Pacific Sunshine, Inc., DBA Pacific Grove, BGP Tavern LLC, DBA Red Heat Tavern, C&amp;C Restaurant Group, Inc., DBA Rocco's Restaurant, LLM, Inc., DBA Tremezo, Poncho's, Inc., DBA Poncho's Cantina, and those are the, those are six of the, five of the six.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? It's unanimous.
The final one under this category is Sam Barra, Inc., DBA Michael's Place.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Four in favor and one's abstained. It's getting late.
Next is a board to consider executing the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission's 2020 seasonal population increase estimate form. This has not historically been a requirement that the board signed in the past. Apparently, they've changed the requirements. I think it's largely geared towards communities that are tourist communities, where the population may fluctuate from season to season. Clearly, in our case, it does not, but the board nevertheless needs to authorize the document as prepared and then sign it.
Okay, we have 70 licenses to sign after this. Anyone want a motion for one more?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous.
So I'll just send around there, it's some of the pain.
Metro will make 71. We have one more?
Forgive me. I was never a math major.
The final is a board to consider issuing a Sunday entertainment license to K-1 Speedway, Inc., 40 Fordham Road.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Can we all meet at K-1 for a race, slugman's race?
As long as it's posted. As long as it's posted.
All right.
Mr. Kyra, as much as I like to run you off the road sometimes, I think that's a great idea. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous.
And this just requires the signature of the chair.
Why not? Okay, that concludes board to consider items. We're onto public comments, are there any public comments? Sir.
Mike Shea, Thirteenth and Fox Street. I don't know if the board's aware of this, but Wilmington lost a true treasure a week ago Friday, in the passing of Michael Bodnar. You may have remembered him carrying the flag at every town meeting. He was a regular at the Hardened Tab and teaching the Boy Scouts about the disciplines of, the disciplines of the flag, and he was a true, truly loved in the community, great, a person that you, I saw recognize months ago. Dwight Sturrock is heartbroken right now. I feel it didn't need to happen, and I cannot live without speaking of the thing that I saw at Woburn Court a couple years ago, and I have to get this off my chest. Mr. Bodnar needed a ride to the court that day. I reluctantly gave him that ride. I sat outside, and he dragged me in. I sat and watched the three department heads that he was dealing with say before the judge that he hadn't done a single thing in the list of the conditions that they had given him to correct. I said, "Your Honor." They said to clean the vines off the chimney, we did that. They said to replace the hot water heater with an electric hot water heater that was propane fired, we did that. They said to clean the numerous propane tanks that were around the building, we did that. They said to clean the entranceway to the house for emergency vehicles, we did that. They said to clean out the driveway, we cleaned it from the street to the house, an enormous undertaking for a man that's almost eighty years old. They took away his geese, they took away his chickens, they tried to take away his dog, and the, the judge looked at me, and then looked at the three boardmen, the three chiefs, fire chief, building inspector, and the health inspector, and they said, "Well, which is it? Is it what Mr. Shea just described, or is it what you described?" And they said, "Well, it's still not enough." You know? That, that was so wrong, so wrong. He did all of these things, but they, and there's an eighty-year-old guy who's flustered, sitting there, unable to express to the judge what's going on, he's kind of lost, but for them to say that and do that, we deserve better than that. He did all of those things, but they told the judge that he did nothing, and when the judge heard, heard it all, the things that he did do, and that I helped him do, she, she said, "Well, this obviously isn't working. All we can do is find the man, it's obviously not working. Are you really prepared to bring this to Superior Court?" And one of them stood up and said, "Yes, we are," with fire in their eyes, "then that's where we're going." And he deserved better than that. He lived here all his life, his family lived here all their lives, they've been in this town for a hundred and five years, they have a vested interest in the community, the taxes that they've paid to this town are more than most, and they had little to give. He was a very simple man, he loved his farm, he loved his geese, and for them to do that was completely wrong, and I don't know how to go forward and look 'em in the eyes, I really don't. And I've sat, thirty-five years ago, we had a similar discussion when I had a problem with the building inspector, me and you sat down in that front office, and we hashed it out, and I admired you for the way you handled it, because I, again, I think you were looking me in the eyes, and you were looking him in the eyes, and you knew who was telling the truth. I've been lied to a lot of times in my fifty-eight years in this town, you know? I, I love this town, I grew up here, I know everybody. I was once asked, "Who do I know?" I know everybody, the good, the bad, and the ugly. What happened to him is a disgrace, shouldn't have been handled that way, it really shouldn't have been, and we lost a treasure. And I don't know how to go on. And I want to thank you, because I saw that you donated to his funeral, and anyone that can help his daughter, they're looking for fifteen thousand on a GoFundMe site, they're at four thousand right now. His daughter's left held, holding the bill, she's lost the house, there's gonna be nothing there for her, and it's a shame, it's a damn shame, and that's all I have to say. I really hope that you will look into what I just said about Woburn District Court, and what the judge had to say, there must be transcripts of it, I'm not lying, and it was disgraceful. And I don't know how to go on. And two years ago, I came down to talk to you about it, Mr. Hope, the second time in forty years that you've been involved down here, that I came down, I came to your office, I left you the story of, that was in the Lowell Sun, Chicken Dance Wilmington, and I left you a bunch of papers, and they told me that you'd call me back, and I gave you my phone number, and I never got that call, and that's why I'm here tonight, and, you know, like I said, thirty-five years ago out there, I thought the world of you, because you looked, you looked at what was happening, you knew I was telling the truth, and I went away happy and satisfied. I don't know what you can do to satisfy this. A lot of people are heartbroken, absolutely heartbroken, with the loss of this wonderful person. He single-handedly built Foley's bond by himself, to think of the immeasurable amount of work that that man was able to do, and how simply he lived his life in this town, I just, I don't know what else to say, but I'm heartbroken, and a lot of people are, and I just hope that moving forward, you can treat people with a little more dignity and respect, because he didn't get it that day in Woburn District Court, and the judge was furious with the three of them, and mark my words, I'm telling you the truth, and it's disgraceful what happened that day, and it could have been stopped. He froze to death at his house with his dog laying on top of him, they're gonna say that we told you that was gonna happen, we all knew it was probably gonna happen, because that's the way he chose to live, and I understand that, and I understand the legalities of neighbors complaining, and boards having to enforce things, but you don't go into court and misinform a judge, and that is what happened on that day. And I had to say that here tonight to all of you people, because I've lived here all my life, and this was the most hurtful thing I've ever experienced in this town in all of my life. He was a great man, a wonderful friend, and a true, true patriot, and a person that really loved this town, and that's all I have to say. Thank you again, and if anyone can help out with the GoFundMe site to Michael Bodnar, it would be greatly appreciated, as you did. Thank you.
Mr. Shea, I thank you for your comments, I know it's certainly not easy for you to get up and share your, your feelings, and I can assure you that our community mourns his loss, and on behalf of this board, we obviously want to send our condolences to his family and his friends, and, and yourself included. Any other public comments? Okay, we'll move to announcements, and I'll start us off, I have a couple. We have, I was pleased on behalf of the board and with the manager to write to Ms. Margaret Dorothy Shelley, who will be turning one hundred years old on January second, before our next meeting, and hopefully she's watching, and we want to wish her a very happy and healthy birthday, one hundred years, she's lived here her whole life, and so best wishes to her and her family from the board. Also want to lastly wish all of my colleagues here in Beverly, and Jeff, and the management team, a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, I wish all of you the best of health. And I want to thank and acknowledge all of our first responders who will be out there the next couple of weeks, working to make sure that we can all enjoy safe holidays. Thank you. Anybody else have an announcement?
Couldn't have said it any better. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
I would have included the press too, but that's, that's you, so remember I said-
That goes without saying.
Here you go.
Just a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everybody.
Same.
All right, any new business this evening?
Just something real quick, Jeff, either you can give us an update, maybe at the next meeting, on Cook Ave, I know Olin made a commitment, saying they were gonna run the water line up Cook Ave, I'd just like to know what the status is of that, and they made the commitment, so let's get the dome in.
I can speak to that at the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Any other new business? Seeing none, we'll move to our final important dates.
The meeting of the Ice Rink and Recreation Facility Committee takes place tomorrow night, the seventeenth, Room Nine here at Town Hall, seven PM. December twenty-fourth, the town offices are closing at noon. December twenty-fifth, Christmas Day, town offices closed. January first, town, New Year's Day, as town offices are closed. January sixth through the seventeenth, curbside collection of Christmas trees. January seventh, another Ice Rink and Recreation Facility Committee meeting, Town Hall Auditorium, seven PM. January ninth is the Economic Development Committee meeting, Town Hall, Room Nine, seven PM. January seventeenth, the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, Town Hall Auditorium, seven PM. January twentieth, town offices are closed in honor of Martin Luther King Day, and then the board meets again on January twenty-seventh, Town Hall, Room Nine, seven PM, Town Manager's FY twenty-one budget presentation.
Okay, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Your second, all in favor? It's unanimous. Good night, everybody, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.